All right, six thirty. I'd like to call this meeting of the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners to order. And start off this evening with prayer and pledge of allegiance. I believe we have a pastor who has offered to offer our invocation for the evening.
Let's pray. Father, in your kindness, you've brought us here. You've pointed this place and this time for us to be at. You've called not only the people in this room, but all of Ottawa County, and put us in this place to live together and ultimately to seek to glorify you. So I ask for wisdom, ask for kindness and your grace to rule and overrule in this meeting. We ask for your wisdom that is hidden in Christ Jesus to be true in these commissioners and in these people tonight, that this would be a meeting to your honor and your glory. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
All right, you can rise and join us for the pledge. And Commissioner Terpstra, if you want to lead us off.
Hi, President. You have to say it. One nation under God. In thy name we pray. For the Lord. 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 For the Lord.
All right, six thirty. I'd like to call this meeting of the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners to order. And start off this evening with prayer and pledge of allegiance. I believe we have a pastor who has offered to offer our invocation for the evening.
Let's pray. Father, in your kindness, you've brought us here. You've pointed this place and this time for us to be at. You've called not only the people in this room, but all of Ottawa County, and put us in this place to live together and ultimately to seek to glorify you. So I ask for wisdom, ask for kindness and your grace to rule and overrule in this meeting. We ask for your wisdom that is hidden in Christ Jesus to be true in these commissioners and in these people tonight, that this would be a meeting to your honor and your glory. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
All right, you can rise and join us for the pledge. And Commissioner Terpstra, if you want to lead us off.
Hi, President. My name is you have to say it. Oh. What nation under God. In thy name we pray. For the Lord. For the Lord.
Thank you. All right. Clerk, if you could please call the role.
That is Cosby.
Here.
Mrs. Ebel.
Here.
Mr. Zylestra.
Here.
Mr. Bonham.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Terpstra.
Here.
Mrs. Curran.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodey.
Here.
Mr. Belnat.
Here.
Mr. Bergman.
Here.
And Mrs. Medema.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. Next up on our agenda is the opportunity, first opportunity for public comment. Public comment gives the public an opportunity to come forward and address the board for three minutes. And I guess I'll go back to you, Mr. Clerk.
The first public comment is Carrie Roberson from Grand Haven City.
My name is Carrie Roberson. I've lived in Ottawa County for over thirty years. I'm a resident of Grand Haven, a wife and educator, a parent of two public high school students, a physician assistant in a primary care practice, and the whole College Health Center. And I'm a very concerned constituent. My list of concerns is long and they stem from these beliefs. I believe that Ottawa County is a place where anyone and everyone belongs, where we should embrace diversity and strive for equity and inclusion of all, where personal freedom should ring, but only if it doesn't endanger others, and where county employees with knowledge, experience, and integrity should be allowed to do their jobs. I am here to encourage you to allow the current capable and competent leadership of the Health Department and community mental health to continue to do their jobs without intimidation or obstruction. As a healthcare provider, I can attest to their vital importance in supporting the health and wellness of the community. Hope College Health Center is a longstanding partnership with the Ottawa County Health Department. Their expertise was vital in the containment of the campus norovirus outbreak of 2008. They have assisted us in handling outbreaks of mumps, cases of varicella, latent tuberculosis, and rabies exposures. They provide us with annual updates on communicable disease prevalence and preparedness. And yes, they also provide essential vaccinations and sexual health resources that are especially important for our underserved communities. We rely on the Health Department to provide science-based directives, not opinions, in matters of communicable disease. As a healthcare provider, I have much more faith in the education and experience of the current legally hired and state-approved health officer than of your proposed replacement. I implore you to keep Adeline Hambley as a health officer. Also, as a healthcare provider with twenty-four years' experience, I am acutely aware of the mental health crisis that has been growing since before the current pandemic in masks. And I know the need for a vibrant, well-funded, and well-staffed community health, mental health office. I implore you to approve today the federally funded positions that have been requested. And finally, as your constituent, I implore you to treat our county employees with respect and let them do their job to serve this community, to serve us all. And just in case none of my words have persuaded you, let me remind you of these words. Let each of you look not only to his own interests, but also to the interests of others. Do you remember that one from the Philippians? Matthew had a good one, too. You say the Bible is your guidebook. Prove it. Do the right thing.
The next public comment is Joe Carone from Georgetown Township.
Good evening. Joe Karen. Not Carone, Georgetown Township. I'm here today to remind all of us of the importance of protecting and defending our constitutional rights. There are those that wish to turn mental health issues into gun issues, and this is something that we cannot allow. As such, I'm going to read to you a resolution in support of Second Amendment rights. Whereas, the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America affirms that it is the natural, God-given right of the people to keep and bear arms and protects Americans against any infringement of this right. And whereas, the members of the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners, the Ottawa County Sheriff, and the Ottawa County Prosecuting Attorney took an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Executive Committee of the Ottawa County Republican Party respectfully asks the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners, the Ottawa County Sheriff, and the Ottawa County Prosecuting Attorney to declare their support for the Second Amendment rights of all Ottawa County citizens as protected by the United States Constitution. And be it further resolved that the Executive Committee of the Ottawa County Republican Party ask the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners, the Ottawa County Sheriff, and the Ottawa County Prosecuting Attorney to declare Ottawa County, Michigan, a sanctuary county for Second Amendment rights. And be it further resolved that the Executive Committee of Ottawa County Republican Party asks the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners, the Ottawa County Sheriff, and the Ottawa County Prosecuting Attorney to do everything in their power to defend the Second Amendment rights of the citizens of Ottawa County from any and all infringements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Julia Bratton from Spring Lake Village.
Good evening, Julia Bratton, Spring Lake, Michigan. Imagine that you have a young child who cannot communicate due to autism. Your child spends a great deal of the day crying and having meltdowns because they are unable to communicate their wants and needs. You would give anything to know what was on their mind. Perhaps your six-year-old child, still in diapers, smears fecal matter all over the walls or eats it. You're probably exhausted because autism often causes your child's sleep schedule to turn upside down. They were up all night, and so were you. You are in no shape to work today or many days. Or your child has such sensory needs that they bang their head into the floor hard for a very long time, every day. Or your child has such intense emotional outbursts that you are regularly summoned to the school to come get them because they are not having a good day. Or maybe they threw a chair at a teacher or a fellow student. Or perhaps your child is a young adult, twenty-seven years old. Extended public school transition services have stopped at age twenty-six. Your child has some language and some work skills that is not able to be completely independent. You are at your wit's end. It's like having a man-sized five-year-old in the house. Or maybe the person who needs help is you or a relative, a lonely senior perhaps becoming confused with old age, forgetting to pay bills or take a bath. An adult without insurance and not much family support, struggling to recover from addiction. Who can help? A robust community mental health agency, that's who, without months-long waitlists for people who need help today. Autism supports coordinators to guide families through therapies and services. Addictions counselors ready to take a call at any time. Complex issues require professionals to provide substantial service and to have enough caseload hours to get the job done. Two thousand eighteen autism rates from the CDC, and this predates the pandemic, are one in forty-four children will be diagnosed. In two thousand sixteen, it was one in fifty-four. In two thousand fourteen, one in fifty-nine. In two thousand twelve, one in sixty-nine, all the way back to nineteen ninety-eight where it was one in a hundred and ten. This is not going to die down or go away. Real Ottawa County families and citizens are represented in these numbers. Ottawa County has a federal grant which will provide Ottawa County community mental health with at least eight positions to provide these badly needed services at no cost to the county. This isn't political. This is compassion. This is critical care for our most vulnerable young and old. Please do not let half a million dollars slip away from Ottawa County community mental health. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Charity McMaster, Spring Lake Village.
Hello, my name is Charity McMaster. I'm from Spring Lake. This board has declared that DEI is divisive and dissolved, and I am talking to you today because I'm wondering if you've never had DEI demonstrated to you in the ways that I have had, and so I would like to do that. I don't know if you can see this. I will explain it. First, we have people who are being treated equally. Each one of these people has a box. There's a fence. They're trying to watch a baseball game. This tall person doesn't really need the box. The second person is shorter, can't really see, and the box does nothing for the person in the wheelchair. On this side, you have people who are being treated equitably, which is to say that the resources are allocated where they're needed. The tall person doesn't need the box. The shorter person has two, and the person in the wheelchair has a ramp. This is equal, and it's not working, and this is equitable, and it does. You can also see a very similar situation, tall, short person in a wheelchair. Here, we have a systemic barrier which is being removed, and that is that the wooden fence has gone, and you can see there's a chain link fence, so everybody benefits without needing these resources. There may even be people who benefit who aren't pictured in this that we hadn't thought about. This is what DEI can do for people. We need this. Possibly somewhere along the way, someone gave you an explanation or some advice about DEI because they cared about you and they want you to be okay in the world. But if that tells you that DEI is divisive and is meant as an attack, that advice is wrong. And it doesn't mean the person that told you is a bad person, and it doesn't mean that you are a bad person. It just means that you have some advice that needs reevaluation. Granting people equal access based on the worthiness of their character doesn't create an equitable world. Although it seems righteous dismissing DEI as divisive and using only character metric as is dismissive of reality and real problems. Maybe this description is a piece of advice that you need to reevaluate. I can assure you that my own insistence is not a smokescreen for anything woke. I know that that word is a word that people like to use to get things dismissed. Please don't dismiss this. Equity is handicap doors, clear park paths, emergency care regardless of a situation, allowing access animals in buildings, none of which can or should be granted on the content of character. DEI is a county board of men and women, as somebody last month pointed out, and a black man is the administrator. You benefit from diversity, equity, and inclusion at the same time that you are trying to destroy these efforts for other people, and it's hypocritical. Ottawa County received an award last month for their DEI actions. This is how we minister to each other. Please reinstate the DEI office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Karen Cotton, City of Grand Haven.
Hi, my name is Karen Cotton, and I live in the city of Grand Haven. I've attended a couple of your meetings this year, but haven't spoken until now. I'm here to express my concern regarding one of today's agenda items. On December thirteenth of two thousand twenty-two, the county commissioners were presented with a resolution to appoint Adeline Hambley as Ottawa County Administrative Health Officer. This motion passed eleven to zero. On January tenth of this year, the motion to approve the minutes of that night, December thirteenth, was passed, thereby moving to appoint Adeline Hambley as health officer. On today's agenda, under number nine, letter A, it says, "Resolution Correction from the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two Board of Commissioners Meeting." Well, I think we all know what's going on here. You made a big oops at the January tenth meeting by approving those December thirteenth minutes. And now, one and a half months and five county board meetings later, you want to have a do-over. Once minutes are approved, they're approved. As much as many of us would like to go back in time and change history, we just can't do that. Perhaps this is an indication that dismissing your qualified county attorney and administrator is causing confusion and missteps. But of greater significance than this apparent cover-up is the fact that Adeline Hambley is the appointed successor and best person for this position. She has nineteen years of relevant experience in public health, was approved by state officials, and is more than qualified to serve as the director of our health department. Please do the right thing for all of Ottawa County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Dan Zimmer, Port Sheldon Township.
Dan Zimmer, Port Sheldon Township, West Isle of Michigan, Chairman and members of the room. I am echoing the words of Anonymous. I came across this post and felt compelled to put a voice to the matter. I am posting anonymously to protect my child's privacy. I would like to contact the OI board members to tell them exactly what I think about their ridiculous, inappropriate, and unnecessary involvement in refusing to allow community health, mental health requests for grant money for additional employees. I need them to understand that CMH changes lives by providing top-tier mental health care and how much my life and my child's life has improved with their help. CMH was a priceless lifeline after I spent years attempting to navigate the mental health care system for my child, getting nowhere. CMH offered us help, services, and solutions like no one else. To nitpick, be condescending, and make flippant remarks about an increased number of people needing CMH due to the government's COVID response shows the appalling lack of knowledge and compassion regarding mental health that Joe Moss and the rest of the OI clan possess. Is there a way to contact the board anonymously other than mailing a letter? I refuse to give OI members any personal information regarding my child as I find them to be highly deceitful and untrustworthy. Anonymous, consider your message delivered. In my remaining time, wording and intent is now your tool to micromanage. Well, I also would like to put something under the microscope. The January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three Health and Human Services Committee meeting, specifically the application process at the one-hour, fifty-minute, and twenty-second timestamp. Nate Kelly's application came my way. Also, the two-hour, two-minute, and twenty-second timestamp when Commissioner Crosby acknowledged the application came to her through Ottawa Impact with a punchline. Well, well, where else would they go? Ottawa County does have employee selection policy and an HR department, unless you eviscerated that function.
Thank you.
Next is Ron Addison, Spring Lake Township.
Yes, Ron Addison, Spring Lake Township. My understanding is that the organization which financed and organized the campaigns of A W U to the county board, Ottawa Impact, was started as a response to COVID restrictions and mandates. Your organizers and you were concerned about your freedoms being infringed upon. People that know me know that in general, I'm a rule-breaker, a free thinker. I am very defensive of individuals' rights. However, as a free people, we have collective responsibility when it comes to the threats to the health and safety of all of us. Mask mandates, other steps, and ultimately vaccines save the lives of millions of people in this country, probably thousands here in Ottawa County. Why would anyone with any sense object to that? During World War II, citizens of the United States were subjected to the rationing of sugar, coffee, meats, cheese, canned milk, and other things. Blackouts were mandated on both coasts. Did these people protest these restrictions and mandates? No, they did not. They pulled together, knowing that they were working for the common good, and that eventually things would get better, which they did. As a Democrat, I have been called a fascist for supporting responsible COVID restrictions, and I've also been labeled unpatriotic and communist because I'm a Democrat. I visited the Soviet Union twice in the seventies, when going there was going behind the Iron Curtain. People I met there needed permits to travel from one city to another. Most were afraid to speak to me, knowing that I was an American, and therefore I was being watched. There were no cars on the white boulevards in Moscow, but yet when I went to cross the street, a soldier with an automatic weapon told me that I could not do so. I've traveled to China many times, and I have Chinese friends. Some have lived through the nineteen sixties Cultural Revolution. Even today, people are restricted in their access to parts of the internet that are not government-controlled. People lack many other freedoms, such as genuine elections and the freedom to speak out. Most Americans are not running towards or even drifting towards authoritarian rule. However, here in Ottawa County, I can see the seedlings of authoritarian rule based upon the actions that this board members, that the board has taken. I feel like I'm living in Bizarro World. Republicans historically have been the party of small government, individual freedoms, fiscal responsibility, and common decency. Now, the Republican Party and Ottawa Impact represent limiting individual freedoms, discrimination against people with different beliefs or lifestyles, flagrant spending to push an agenda benefiting a limited number of people, and forcing their beliefs on others. As has been said many times before at this podium, America is a democratic republic and not a Christian nation. I personally am a Christian, but the United States is not a Christian nation, and there should not be forced religion or forced beliefs on anybody. As far as I can tell, there is little difference between Ottawa Impact and some forms of Muslim fundamentalism.
Thank you.
Next is Julia Davey Robinson Township.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dr. Julia Davey, and I live in Robinson Township. I graduated from the University of Michigan Medical School in nineteen ninety-two, and I completed my residency in pediatrics at the University of Wisconsin in nineteen ninety-five. Since that time, until my recent retirement this past summer, I practiced general pediatrics in Grand Haven. During that time, I got to know and love many of the wonderful families of this area, all of whom are just trying to do what's best for their own children. By the time I retired, many of my families were second generation. I got to see the parents grow, and then I got to see their children grow. It is the greatest honor of my life. That is why I would like to express my extreme concern about your nomination of Mr. Nathaniel Kelly for the position of the Ottawa County Administrative Health Officer. Mr. Kelly has expressed views that are refuted by scientific research. He has gone against the recommendations of every major medical organization in this country. One of the functions of the Health Department is to advise the physicians of this county in matters of public health. Just imagine for a minute that your child has been exposed to rabies. Imagine that you take your child to their doctor. Imagine that doctor calling the Health Department led by Mr. Kelly for advice. Would you be able to trust that the advice that you were given was appropriate and based on science and evidence? I think not. By nominating Mr. Kelly for this position, you have shown an unbelievable lack of respect for every physician in Ottawa County. If Mr. Kelly is appointed to this position, the physicians of Ottawa County will not be able to trust that the Health Department will give them appropriate, evidence-based recommendations in matters of public health. I believe that putting Mr. Kelly in such a position of authority that the Ottawa County Health Department would put the health of the children of Ottawa County at risk, and you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the commissioners that support his nomination will be directly responsible. I urge you to withdraw his nomination immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mike Curas, Spring Lake Township.
Good evening. Mike Curas, Spring Lake Township. I come before you again to raise the subject that I've raised before. I ask you to work with the clerk and the county administrator to include in the minutes not only the name and the place of residence, but the subject that each person coming before us speaks to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Dina from Holland Township.
Hi, I'm Dina Arner. I'm coming here from Holland Township.
I'm coming here from Holland Township, and I've changed my mind about five times since I've been in here this short time about what to speak to you about, because there are just so many outrageous things going on in this county right now. But I decided I would talk about fiscal responsibility. I've grown up around Republicans my entire life, and the one thing that was drummed into me is that the Republicans were better, the conservatives were better because they were fiscally responsible. They were not going to tax and spend and spend our dollars frivolously. And I'd like to offer you all as an exhibit as to why that is a lie. You fired the current administrator, and you now owe hundreds of thousands of dollars in severance pay. Are you going to pay that out of your pocket, or am I going to pay it out of my pocket? You are setting the county up for numerous lawsuits, the appointment of an obviously unqualified health administrator, the firing of an obviously qualified health administrator, the denial of grants. I'm sure somebody will see you about that, or you will have to defend in court your legal actions. All of these, the only thing I can assume that some of these policies are designed for is to promote litigation so that your perfect, hand-picked lawyer, who happens to be your personal connection, Mr. Moss, can shovel our tax dollars into his pocket, and I'm sure he'll let a few drop down into your pocket as well. But I, for one, am sick and tired of hearing how fiscally responsible Republicans are when you take the actions that all of you here on this board have taken with our tax dollars. Try to be a Republican and try to think about spending our tax dollars wisely. I'm not here to fund Mr. Coleman's next yacht.
Thank you. Next is Cynthia Smires, Robinson Township.
My name is Cynthia Smires, and I am from Robinson Township. I'm here today to express my contempt, not only with the choices made by this board, but the way in which the majority of this board conducts itself. At your first meeting, you let us know that you embrace secrecy, lies, fake agendas, and cruelty. You had the opportunity to be honest with the people. You chose deceit. You had the opportunity to be professional and kind regarding the leadership of Ottawa County. Instead, you blindsided people and showed your taste for public humiliation and cruelty by firing people without reason, conversation, or the humanly decent choice of privacy. The majority of this board continued to be self-absorbed and put its need for control over the needs of the citizens by refusing to approve the candidate for CAA's advisory board when that candidate was first presented, even when you were told it could jeopardize agency funding. The board's only job was to make sure the appropriate process was followed and that the candidate was qualified, both of which were done. Instead, the board showed surprise that an employee of Ottawa County would need to utilize CAA services. Just because you don't know what it's like to struggle to pay bills doesn't mean it's not a common struggle for others. I have previously worked as a social worker in Ottawa County and have known Brittany Brown both personally and professionally, and she is an excellent candidate. Furthermore, in addressing the head of CMH, Chair Joe Moss implied that the increase in need for mental health services was due to public health policies, wearing masks in particular. This seems to be the only issue that Joe Moss wants to talk about. You've become one-hit wonders, and it is time to learn a new song. There is so much going on in Ottawa County. Please look beyond yourselves and see that other people live here too, and that their concerns are just as important as yours. This one-issue obsession has gotten in the way of providing Ottawa County with much-needed additional CMH positions. How do these actions fit with your motto, "Let Freedom Ring"? Is it ringing for the people who need those CMH services? Is freedom ringing for Health Officer Adeline Hambley? You've attempted to demote her, you disrespect her, and it appears that you're going to lie and pretend that she was never even appointed to her job. The job she applied for, interviewed for, was approved by the State of Michigan and was selected as the best candidate. Is unethically trying to steal the job of a qualified health officer so you can put in your own puppet, letting freedom ring? Sadly, when you say "let freedom ring," it means only for yourselves and the people who fund your campaigns. I ask this board to look beyond the mirror and see the needs of everyone in this county and to please find some maturity, professionalism, and some basic human decency in your decision-making.
Thank you. Next is Stephen Rockman, Grand Haven Township.
Evening, Commissioners. Board members have been called Christian nationalists because they govern by Christian principles. Allegedly, they have a nefarious plot to take over the county. They're trying to impose a theocracy or fascism, and yawn racism. Cutting through it, this is just playground name-calling, to bludgeon, bully, intimidate, and keep Christian conservatives out of public square to shame them for not being good, easily controlled, moderate Republicans, to demand the absolute separation of church and state. Yet the U.S. Constitution does not demand the absolute separation of church and state. It's okay to govern by Christian principles. The Constitution says Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. I'm not aware of any commissioner seeking to establish a county religion or prohibit people from the free exercise thereof, like the former Health Department officer who was shut down and liberalized, or the former board that established a cult of DEI. Thomas Jefferson's "while separation" letter to the Danbury Baptists was not a constitutional precept. It was merely a political statement to his Baptist supporters to reassure them the government would not interfere with them or favor one denomination over another. Notably, during his presidency, he used federal money to build Christian churches, support Christian missionaries. His personal seal declared rebellion to tyrants is obedience to God. In hindsight, Jefferson actually built a bridge to Christians, not a wall. Today, Christian principles fill our society. The official motto of the United States is, "In God we trust, it's on the currency." Michigan law strongly encourages local government to place the motto on public buildings, and the pledge declares "One nation under God." In the alternative, history has shown us governments based on something other than Christian principles, like the National Socialist German Workers' Party, the Union of Soviet Socialist Republics, and the Communist Party of China. That is what the separation of church and state looks like, something like dystopia. I prefer Christian nationalism. So, thank you for your leadership. Continue to govern by Christian principles. Let freedom ring.
Thank you. Next is Donna Mooney, Georgetown Township.
Good evening, Commissioners. My thoughts and prayers go out to the students, faculty, and families of those affected in the MSU shooting and all victims of gun crime. America does not have a gun problem. America has a lack-of-value-for-life problem. America has a lack-of-faith-and-morals problem. America has mental health problems. America has a problem of the heart and a problem with evil. If you tackle the root causes of these problems and if law enforcement and prosecutorial offices adequately hold those who commit gun crimes accountable, not just here in Michigan, but across the U.S., by enforcing the laws already on the books, you can tackle gun crimes. Soft-on-crime policies that enable criminals to commit crimes with little to no consequence, such as no cash bail laws, plea bargains for repeat offenders, and even defunding the police only encourage and breed more crime. The law also must be color and politically blind to crime and must take appropriate action, regardless of the perpetrator's race, gender, ethnicity, or any other background factor irrelevant to the crime action. The consequences or lack thereof affect us all, regardless of our race or political affiliation, and we must get back to holding people accountable over accepting social engineering resolutions that do nothing to solve the problem of gun violence. I'd like to reaffirm my support from the new commissioners, John Gibbs and the Common Legal Group. I'd also like to extend my support for the resolution put forth by the Ottawa County Republican Party in support of the Second Amendment rights. I'd support the Board of Commissioners in writing a resolution declaring Ottawa County a Second Amendment sanctuary county, and I respectfully ask the sheriff and the prosecutor's offices to uphold their oath of office and the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens against any legislation put forth that is repugnant to the United States Constitution. I'm requesting that my House and Senate representatives reject any legislation that further infringes upon the rights of the people and request that our law enforcement and prosecuting attorneys uphold the laws already on the books when charging and prosecuting gun crimes. I, for one, am not giving up my rights so that others can feel safe. While we're distracted with COVID and real or perceived social issues and threats, the World Economic Forum has moved into Michigan's Oakland County, where they hope to make Michigan the model of what they want for the entire country. Klaus Schwab, the head of the World Economic Forum, and other unelected elitist bureaucrats, along with paid-off politicians, would like to see us all living in their smart cities where you will own nothing and be happy. Klaus Schwab's own words. This is called Agenda 2030. If you read Klaus Schwab's book, COVID-19: The Great Reset, Klaus tells us exactly what happens for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ryan Anderson, Chester Township.
Ryan Anderson, Chester Township. Good evening, Chairman Moss. I've observed persistent cry against Christian nationalism during the public comments in these last few meetings. These communists decry the use of Christian morality to determine the function of government, insisting instead on democracy and that we should maintain the separation of church and state. They fail to realize that they themselves, having been made in the image of God, are acting out of a zeal for their own religion just as much as anyone else is. And not only does every single person believe in some form of a God, every nation has a God over it as well. Sadly, and certainly at least at the federal level, America has become the U.S. of Gay, and the incomplete rainbow has become our flag. Every nation on earth has blasphemy laws. Note the censorship that Christians receive at the hanyan hands of communists if they speak against sodomy, for example. Every nation has a moral standard. Is it decreed by fiat from the state or the law of God as the moral standard to determine what is good and beautiful and true? It is not whether or not a nation will have any of these things. It is which God will be over the system. Which blasphemy laws will censor our speech? Which moral standard will determine right from wrong, truth from error? This is not a pragmatic debate as to whose idea will be implemented in order to better society. God has all the best ideas anyway, and they're found in His Word. Rather, this is a spiritual battle to determine which God will be over the nation, which God will be over Ottawa County. We, as Christians, have failed to boldly assert and retain Almighty God over our nation and His law as the moral standard by which we must live. We have rejected Him, and He has rejected us. We didn't realize that the void or vacuum that we have created by failing to uphold Him and His law as holy would be filled by another. The last thing that these communists want is to cede back the ground that they have to their credit gained in these last few generations in replacing the God over our nation with their own God. Yet Christianity is different from these theocracies, such as communism or Islam, who conquer by force. The kingdom of God is spread by obedience to His law, through the presentation of the gospel and the free gift of salvation, leaving it up to the power of the Holy Spirit to conquer the dead and hardened heart. So which God will it be? For all the gods of the peoples are worthless idols, but the Lord made the heavens. We must all choose this day whom we will serve. As for me and my house, we will serve the Lord. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment number 16, Sheila Detloff, Holland Township.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Detloff, and I live in Holland Township. To be blunt, nothing pisses off your constituents, both supporters and non-supporters alike, like wasting our hard-earned money. And that's what you're doing with this agenda item, to try to change the approved and adopted resolution to appoint Adeline Hambley. If you go through with this, it's clearly headed for court. I'll leave the ethics of that up to other people. I just know I don't want my tax dollars being used to defend you from what is obviously an unlawful action that you clearly know is prohibited. If you want proof, I have three points. One, there is one legitimate procedure to reconsider an approved resolution. In fact, it's outlined in your board rules that you approved here on January 3rd. That procedure is in your rules, because you're aware it's the only legitimate procedure for something like this, but you didn't use it. Two, there's a paragraph at the bottom of the written resolution to appoint Ms. Hambley that reads in part, "This resolution replaces, modifies, amends, and/or supersedes all inconsistent or prior resolutions or motions regarding the subjects addressed herein." Let me read the relevant parts of that again. "This resolution supersedes all inconsistent motions regarding the subjects addressed herein." In other words, the resolution itself makes clear that Commissioner Keier's motion last December was superseded by the written resolution, which was reviewed and then signed by all the commissioners. So unless you're planning to somehow strike that paragraph, too, that's kind of the final nail in your coffin right there. But, three, I only had to watch as far as the second agenda item on January 3rd to find a glaring discrepancy between Gretchen Cosby's verbal motion to appoint Common Legal Group and the corresponding written resolution. After some discussion, you, Commissioner Moss, asked for the content of the written resolution to be, and I quote, "read for clarity." You didn't ask Ms. Cosby to repeat her motion. You asked her to read the written resolution. You clearly understood that the written resolution is the legal record. In fact, you'd be running into some kind of interesting problems right now if it weren't. Bottom line, this whole thing is a farce. It's clearly unlawful. You know it's unlawful, and you don't have to be a lawyer to know. It would not hold up in court. So don't waste our money. Do the smart thing and strike it from the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, number 20, is Peter Armstrong, Sr., Grand Haven Township.
Peter Armstrong, Sr., Grand Haven Township. This is the first meeting I've come to, and it strikes me that what I want to talk about are not the policy issues. People can disagree on many of those, but I have some comments on process. And I'm interested that the speakers who seem to be aligned with the new members of this board, people I see who seem to me you're more interested in culture wars maybe than actually running the county, and their comments are more culture war kinds of comments. I'd like to bring this down to actually running the county. That's what you people are here for. That's what we expect. We expect the county run in a business-like way. From a process standpoint, that includes transparency. And, you know, you all know what you've done. The young woman from Robinson Township summarized it pretty well, how you ignored transparency, acted in secret, vertically. You know, people are asking, "What are you afraid of? Why don't you just do this out in the open?" I could comment on policy issues, too, because I suspect I disagree with some of yours, but please, please do this in a transparent, workmanlike, business-like way, the way these things are supposed to be run, please.
Thank you. Number 21 is Michael Farage, Kent County.
My name's Michael Farage. I am a resident of Kent County in Grand Rapids. Thank you for hosting this. Thank you to everyone for being here. This is our constitutional republic at work. Take a good look. How's it work this way in Cuba, Venezuela? Yeah, I can see him back in the back room already whining and crying once it didn't stand for our pledge. First of all, federal dollars are taxpayer dollars. So when someone makes the comment, they're stuff no cost to us. Anything after that is irrelevant. The person does not know what they're talking about. These vaccine companies, you can't sue. So that obviously... These vaccine companies, you can't sue, so that obviously says how well they work. Uh, when I hear the word that science, members of the board, I mean, how far does that go? If you refuse to jab, they want you fired. If you refuse to jab, they don't want you in school. You refuse to wear the mask? They don't want you, uh, anywhere. I mean, so the science only goes as political as, as this candidate that they want you to approve, who's ultimately very, very political, and that's the only reason they're backing, they're backing this individual. I think the decisions of this board have been not only sound, but very constitutional. And I encourage you to take it to the step further. This is a great county. You need to market this county in deed of the campaign pledges made by these individuals. Kent County doesn't follow or abide by any of the rules that they do in Ottawa County. So if people don't like it, the great thing about a republic, we can go there. I also want to caution as I close about taxation. One of the things that this board ran on is taxation. And when you see any branch of government, any entity, attempt to double dip with millages and then backup millages just years later, this board needs to take action. Because we are fiscally conservative, you ran as fiscal conservatives. And any attempt at that, regardless of what the entity is, the board members must stand up for what is fiscally right for the taxpayers of this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Number twenty-two, Benjamin Rance, Robinson Township.
You had it right. It's Rance. Uh, thank you, everybody, for the time to speak. Uh, this is my first Board of Commissioners meeting. So I'll have to apologize if I'm a little rusty and don't get as agitated as everybody else who's come up here so far. Um, but I'm basically here today, uh, because I am kind of disappointed and embarrassed with a lot of the actions that the Board of Commissioners, that are supposed to represent me and the beautiful county that I've lived in for thirty-five years. Uh, it is a county where you belong, no matter what the new motto says. Um, I'm concerned with the proposed amendment to the resolution adopted on December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, which a number of individuals have talked about, um, in which the Ottawa County Health Officer was legally and correctly appointed to do their job, which is an important job, informing and protecting the citizens of Ottawa County on health-related issues. It's an issue that's been passed. It's finished, and it's time to focus on other stuff. Trying to illegally undo the actions of a previous committee that have already been passed and create doubt or uncertainty doesn't make you right. It just makes you desperate. Um, in addition to this, I'm really disappointed with the decision to delay the approval of the federally funded positions for the county's community mental health organization. These are federal grants that fund positions that support some of our most vulnerable community members. Everybody in the community counts, and this includes individuals with severe mental illness and children with emotional disturbances. Your apparent unfamiliarity with the issue and apathy toward these individuals who would benefit from these services is pretty evident, and it's embarrassing. Certain members of this board seem to consider these disadvantaged and marginalized individuals as less than. I'm not a Bible scholar, but I'm still having a hard time trying to find a Bible verse that shows Jesus treating people this way. So if you can find it, please let me know. Your lack of transparency and good governance has sadly eroded any trust I had previously placed in you as elected officials. The actions of certain members of this board are vindictive. They are not value-based. They are rooted in religious extremism, not righteousness. They're meant to divide and deprive certain groups of individuals and not deliver results for everybody in this county. As I mentioned previously, this is my first meeting, as you can probably tell. Uh, I assure you that it will not be my last. As long as this board continues to promote policies and take actions that alienate, hurt, and ignore the will and needs of Ottawa County citizens like me, I will be here to voice my concerns. I do want to, with my remaining time, echo the words of a gentleman that was here a couple, a couple people ago. We should be trying to bring people together. Everybody in this county counts. Everybody in this county should be represented, and we should try to work together to make it even more beautiful place to live for everybody, not try to push these divisive issues and work behind the scenes to push your own agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number twenty-three is Don Bergman from Park Township.
Thank you. Uh, Ottawa County Commissioners, I have stood here before you and labeled you as fascist and theocrats. And today I want to infer from things that you've done and people have said about you is that you are biblical literalists. Biblical literalism justifies killing people, sometimes at the hand of others, sometimes by suicides. I once was a biblical literalist. I raised my gay son according to the Gospel of James Dobson, and it almost killed him. There was no room for him to be gay. Before puberty, we had a sex talk. I never included that if you have sexual feelings for men, or if you think you might be female, that it's okay. Let's talk. I never bash gays. No need, we're Christians. But my son got the message from the pulpit, Bible studies, harassment appears, and my overlooking gay harassing by students when he was in my class. He hid from us, assuming that we would not love him. He knew he was suicidal, very unhappy child, hating himself for his feelings. He never dared tell those Christian counselor, fearful he might find out. After repeated prayers, "Take this from me," he assumed even Jesus did not love him. He had the pills lined up twice, age fourteen and twenty. When he came out to us, I learned that I had taught him lies about human sexuality. If he had committed suicide, I would have been complicit in his death. I taught in a Christian school for thirty years. Not wanting to be complicit in the suicide of my students, I attempted to stop harassment of gays in my classroom. One said we should line gays up against the wall and shoot them. When I detained another student for harassment, he looked at me with fire in his eyes. Who are you to tell me I can't harass gays when God says I can kill them? An administrator said the same thing. "Don, if we stop the harassment of gays, more kids will choose to be gay and go to hell. We're loving them by harassing them. If your son committed suicide, it was because he knew he was evil, and his blood is on his hands and not ours." Eventually, the school declared me a heretic and terminated my employment. Minister said the same thing. He included I was going to hell. That's where literal reading of the Bible takes you. Don, it's okay if your son commits suicide. One does not choose to be GLBT. If you do not create a welcoming, safe society for GLBT folks, accepting them with equal rights from discrimination, stifle discussion about human sexuality in schools, then you simply do not care if one is murdered or commits suicide. Biblical literalism, literalists are complicit in these deaths. Your positions on GLBT folks leads to death. It must be discussed and brought in the open so kids can determine this before they, uh, mature. Isn't that what the...
Thank you.
Uh, disclaimer, I have a brother named, I have a disclaimer.
Roger Bergman, sir, please continue. Please, please take your seat.
Uh, I have a brother named Roger Bergman.
Next is Alpha Mansory, Holland Township.
Good evening, Commissioners, and I'm thankful to be here. Obviously, I regret that stunning display of a lack of grace and compassion with that statement, but moving forward. I just want to read a few names here. Adeline, Adley, Lisa Stefanowski, Marshall Mansory, Heather Arbiter, John Shea, Robin O'Freak. These are people that you misaligned your character before even you get to know them. You said all sorts of things against them, and that's not right. You see, leadership is a contract based on trust. And that stems from principle number one, connection before correction. If you really made an attempt to get to know these people, you find out that they, they were stellar characters. They have run the health department with aplomb. They are just a stalwart, standing in front of the community against all the possible diseases that can happen. They saved our lives, this pandemic. I hope you get a chance to thank them and show your gratitude. See, ultimately, leadership is not about glorious crowning acts. It's about keeping your team focused on a goal and motivated to do their best and achieve it, especially when the stakes are high and the consequences really matter. It's about laying the groundwork for orders to succeed and then standing back and letting them shine. You should stand back and let the health department shine. See, human kindness has never weakened the stamina or softened the fiber of a free people. A nation does not have to be cruel to be tough. Franklin B. Roosevelt, he said. You see, we're more likely to influence people if we're willing to minister with kindness and patience to their needs. Rachel Goodrich. You have been elected to a position of leadership, and you lead for all of us. And I'm just going to make this one point. Let go. Letting go helps us to live in a more peaceful state of mind and helps to restore our balance. It allows for others to be responsible for themselves and for us to have our hands off situations that do not belong to us. This frees us from unnecessary... Melody BD.
Thank you.
Number twenty-five, Jeff King, Jamestown Township.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board of Commissioners. My name is Jeff King, Jamestown Township. Been a resident of Ottawa County since nineteen sixty-five. I want to thank all the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners and the County Sheriff and the Ottawa County Prosecuting Attorney for the oath of office that you took to support and defend the Constitution and the United States of America. I'd like to read an article by Cal Thomas, Commentary, February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. "The tragic shooting at Michigan State University could have been prevented. How? More gun laws? No. The suspect, who killed himself after murdering three students and seriously wounding five others, had been earlier charged with felony gun violations, charges that were reduced to a misdemeanor by a George Soros prosecutor. The prosecutor, Carol Simon, of Ingham County, retired at the start of this year, facing criticism from judges and law enforcement officials for her soft-on-crime policies. The Washington Free Beacon reported that Simon made at her office's official policy to drop mandatory prison sentences for felony firearms charges. She said the sentencing enhancements led to dramatic racial inequality, and it was not in any way linked to the goal that we share of keeping the public safe." Really? Tell that to the families of the dead and the wounded. The dead suspect, a person of color, and was given probation. He should have been in jail. The blood is clearly on the hands of Simone and other woke prosecutors who are endangering the public by their liberal policies. We're tired of gun-hating, headline-grabbing politicians racing to the nearest microphone to push their anti-rights agenda every time a criminal or deranged individual commits a violent crime. That's not justice. That's political grandstanding, designed to penalize the people who had nothing to do with crime. Passing new laws that only impact honest citizens creates the false impression something has been done to prevent a similar crime in the future. At the very least, it's dishonest. Here's some facts about gun ownership by a twenty-twenty-one Pew Research Center survey. Estimated that gun ownership is seventy-nine percent higher in rural areas and thirty-seven point nine percent higher in the suburbs when compared to urban areas. It's also interesting to note that the areas with stricter firearms regulations, like LA and Chicago, are at the top of the list for high gun crime. Let that sink in.
Thank you.
Number twenty-six, Catherine Bristol-Bass, Holland City.
I'm Catherine Bristol-Bass of the city of Holland. Chair Moss and the Ottawa Impact members of the board specifically. I am annoyed. I'm annoyed because although I had philosophical differences with some of the past members of this body, the former members, I trusted them to be able to promote free discussion and the exchange of ideas, the general good governance of this county, the daily business of the county, of running the county. Now, I feel like I have to block off time out of my own busy schedule to be here. I appreciate people who serve. However, I am not an elected official. And so here I have to be watching, checking, making sure that you are able to conduct the business of the county without destabilizing us, without making us appear ridiculous. I just returned from a vacation on the West Coast, and I actually had people say, oh, you're from Michigan? We're hearing weird things out of Michigan. And I was like, yeah, that's my county. I'm so sorry. And they said, no, 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 it's not you. It's not your county. I said, no, it really is my county. And they said, that weird stuff? I said, yeah, that's my county. I'm so embarrassed. And they're like, yeah. Yeah. How strange is that? We are no longer considered a stable county. I and the others, your constituents, expect and call you to fairness, transparency, stability, fiscal responsibility, integrity, servant leadership, and general good governance. Instead, what I've observed is you attacking employees, firing employees, intimidating employees, blocking actions that lead to federal grants to our county, uh, unwise decisions, contracts and alliances, capricious and unnecessary changes that are costing us, self-serving actions, lining pockets, chaos, poor employee morale, and generally bad governance. I am very, very annoyed. I give my kudos to the Holland Sentinel, the Ottawa County Public Health Department, and the community mental health, and those who continue to serve in good faith, and I am not looking at most of you for that.
Thank you.
Number twenty-seven is Brenda Vandermeulen, Holland Township.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Vandermeulen. I was born in Ottawa County. I live in Holland Charter Township. My father was a school board member in Coopersville, Michigan, for many years, and once told me that the most dangerous people in the world were those who said, "Don't confuse me with the facts, because I've already made up my mind." I believe I now have a commission that represents primarily people who are not interested in facts, and I'm terrified. I'm here tonight to state my support for the appointment of Brittany Brown to the Community Action Agency Advisory Board. Ms. Brown is qualified, has volunteered her time to serve our community in this manner, and she was the only person in the county who did that, the only one. Given the fact that this position requires that that board member, that position, be a consumer of the services of the Action House, and given the fact that she meets this requirement, and given the fact that the leadership of that agency has recommended her appointment to this position, I fail to see why you would take any other action. I'm also here to oppose the so-called correction to the December Board minutes. Adeline Hambley is highly qualified to serve as the Health Officer for Ottawa County. It's very clear that the Board of Commissioners approved her for this role at their meeting in December. She is a public health professional who has earned her position. As a senior human resources professional with over thirty-five years of hiring experience, I learned a long time ago that certain positions require extensive experience in addition to appropriate educational credentials. Ms. Hambley has both of those. The Board of Commissioners chose her because of that experience. Commissioner Ziostra tonight confirmed to me that it was the intent of the board at that meeting to appoint her to that position. Your attempt to rewrite history to serve your purposes is misguided and most likely illegal. And as a follower of Jesus Christ, who gets up every morning and says the Shema, to love the Lord, the Lord, the Lord, my God, with all my... the Lord, the Lord, the Lord, my God, with all my heart, soul in mine, and to love my neighbor as myself, I will not condone your inappropriate actions. Thank you.
Number 28, Ronnie Allen from Allendale Township.
Thank you to this board. During COVID, after the action and inaction of our governing authorities overriding basic rights, things had to change. You were elected for a reason. It seems we have a very short memory, though. COVID has taken a backseat in our minds and it seems we may have forgotten about the school closures, forced masking, the graduations missed, the depression and suicides, and the grandparents who suffered and died alone. So not only do we need a board that respects constitutional rights and a sheriff who protects them, we also need a health department that does. Fears of death and sickness cannot trump basic rights and freedoms. Regarding the hiring of corporate counsel, MCL 4911 gives the board the power to hire counsel. And when Mr. Van Assen was hired in 2017, there was no request for proposals sent out because none was needed. And there was a conversation between the former administrator and Mr. Van Assen. And following a motion by Mr. Danenberg, the board voted to hire him. Then he announced his retirement last year. Not only was the hiring of Common Legal Group legal, but as a defender of constitutional rights, it is what is needed. I strongly support the two-way resolution to make this county a sanctuary county. Finally, I appreciate the diversity of backgrounds and thought represented at our county and in this room. Robust debate is part of keeping our liberty.
Number 29, Kendra Wenzel, Hudsonville.
Hi, I'm Kendra Wenzel, Ottawa County resident. I'm here to talk today about the agenda behind actions taken by our so-called experienced leaders from the Public Health Department. Number one, the decision to mask our children. On August 20th, 2021, the Ottawa County Administrative Health Officer Lisa Stefanovsky issued an order that pre-K through grade six students must wear masks at school. Fast forward to the February 23 article in the New York Times. The article was written by Oxford-educated epidemiologist and lead author Tom Jefferson. In his article, Tom unequivocally states, there is just no evidence that they masks make any difference. Documentation. What was the consequence of this mask mandate by Lisa Stefanovsky? The consequence to our children was a documented substantial learning loss and an increase in mental health issues. We must ask ourselves, was this mask mandate ever about keeping our children healthy or was it just a part of the ongoing fear agenda to exert control over our county's population? Number two, the promotion of radical content in the Family Planning Guide, documented here. The Ottawa County Department of Public Health authored a 30-page Family Planning Guide. This guide promoted early childhood sexuality and pro-abortion resources. The preface of this document was written by Heather Alberta, the Sexuality Educator. Heather has been in public health for 21 years. What happened regarding this document? The Libs of TikTok authored a post on June 7, 2022, stating, "The Ottawa County Department of Public Health advises parents in normal behaviors related to sexuality." They stated that normal behaviors were newborn babies experiencing genital pleasure and three-year-olds should be taught about masturbation. Let that perversion sink in for just a minute. After the Libs of TikTok exposed this advisement to their followers, Ottawa County deleted the PDF from the county's website. One has to wonder about the timing of this document's removal. Maybe it was deleted because their progressive agenda was openly exposed to 1.2 million followers of the author's page. On to number three, the GBSU Kinky Sex Week sponsorship. It would have never occurred to most Ottawa County taxpayers that sponsoring a kink education and sex toy demonstration for students at one of our local universities would ever be considered a responsible use of our county's funds. This happened under the current leadership of our Ottawa County interim Administrative Health Officer Adeline Hamley. Hamley, Adeline, has 18 years of experience in public health. What happened after the Midwesterner news site published this information? Amazingly, the Health Department had their name removed from the Recreation and Wellness site as partner of this event. Why did they remove their name? Could it possibly be that the Health Department was exposed for sponsoring a hypersexuality agenda to our college students? The aforementioned topics bring me to Sarah Leach, the Executive Director of the Holland Sentinel. Sarah has been writing endless articles about the need for experience in our Health Department. I believe the truth behind the articles that Sarah is writing is that she is afraid of losing her progressive agenda leaders. When you look at what our so-called experienced leaders are approving and doing, it is clearly not about the health and well-being of our Ottawa County.
Number 30, Harvey Nickel, Georgetown Township.
Thank you. I'm Harvey Nickel from Genesee. Thank you for standing up for us and making freedom ring in Ottawa County. A common theme in the comments of those speaking against the actions regarding the Health Department is that we should listen to the experts and follow the science. I fully agree. Yet during the past three years, the Health Department simply echoed Dr. Fauci, the FDA, and the CDC, who did not follow any science, but pushed an agenda that made billions of dollars for Big Pharma. An expert would never say that a mask of 80 micron pore size would stop a virus of one micron in diameter. The head of the CDC now admits that masking does not work. Health experts would never ban off-label drugs like HCQ and ivermectin that save thousands and thousands of lives. Actual health experts would never recommend a hospital protocol to treat COVID using remdesivir, which never passed clinical trials for HIV because too many patients died of kidney failure. An expert would not deny natural immunity and coerce people who already had COVID to take an experimental injection that stops neither infection nor transmission. Almost all the people now being hospitalized or dying from COVID have been vaxxed and boosted. The EU have, in the EU, the vaccinated account for nine out of 10 COVID deaths over the past two years. A recent report shows that miscarriages are 57 times higher and stillbirths are 38 times higher after the shot. The odds of a child getting myocarditis are 1 in 250,000, but the odds are 1 in 40 after getting the COVID shot. This has become a pandemic of the vaccinated. There have been more deaths from the COVID shot than from all other vaccines in the past 30 years. The VAERS report now lists 34,000 deaths. The CDC and the media are misleading the public with respect to these deaths because they do not consider a person fully vaccinated until 14 days after receiving the last shot. 85% of the deaths occur within that 14-day period, so those people are labeled as unvaccinated. Instead of pushing the shots, Ottawa County Health Department should have stopped the vaccination campaign two years ago. Also, they are complicit in violating the informed consent law, along with all the doctors and clinics and pharmacies who are giving these shots. The package insert for the COVID vaccine is blank. These inserts normally list all the possible side effects and adverse effects, so people were not informed of the dangers of these shots. And now some are having strokes, developing myocarditis, neurological disorders, cancer, and even dying suddenly. All Health Department officials who were involved in pushing the masks, the lockdowns, and the shots should be replaced with individuals who will follow the actual experts and the science. I have some information.
Number 31 is Bruce Greenlee, Park Township.
Good evening, Commissioners and audience. I'm Bruce Greenlee from Park Township. In 1972, Saul Alinsky died. He was a radical. He wrote Rules for Radicals. Both Hillary Clinton and Barack Obama have written positively about him. He believed that power and fear are the fountainheads of faith. He wrote How to Create a Socialist State: Eight Things to Do. Number one, healthcare, control it and you control the people. Two, poverty, increase poverty as high as possible. As the poor are easier to control or not fight if the government is providing everything. Three, debt, increase it to an unsustainable level. Four, gun control, remove the ability of people to defend themselves from the government. Five, welfare, take care of every aspect of people's lives, food, housing, and income. Six, education, take control of what people read and listen to. Take control of what children learn in schools. Seven, remove the belief in God from the government and schools. Eight, class welfare, divide the people to disconnect them. Alinsky merely simplified Vladimir Lenin's scheme for world conquest. Lenin described his converts as useful idiots. Useful idiots have destroyed every nation they have seized power in and control in. We can list them ad nauseam. Today we have election deniers as there were when Hillary Clinton was not elected President of the US in 2016. They were called to resist. Now in this county, we're called to object. Those who were elected in 2022 agreed to uphold certain values and a majority of Ottawa County voters agreed. Number one, pro-life. Life begins at conception and is sacred from beginning to end. Pro-election integrity. Election is not selection, one vote per legal living citizen. Number three, pro-America. The US is exceptional in the land of freedom and opportunity. Four, pro-constitution, including the First and Second Amendment. The US Constitution protects our rights. Five, pro-small business. Your business is yours only. Every job is essential. Number six, pro-parental rights. These are not negotiable. Your child belongs to you. Pro-health freedom. Information, not orders, mandates, or coercion. Eight, pro-child innocence. A boy is a boy. A girl is a girl. Children are not racist or sexual. Number nine, pro-education. Academic excellence and true history, no woke indoctrination. Number 10, pro-religious freedom. Government should never close churches. We must have freedom.
Thank you. Number 32, Cynthia Madsen, Grand Haven Township.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Madsen. I live in Grand Haven Township. This is my first meeting here and I first have to say that I do not envy your job because you have a very divided community and I don't know how you're ever going to bring us all together. I wonder at this point in the program whether it's even possible that you're listening to our comments anymore because they are so divided. But I did come here to share some of my concerns with you and the actions of this committee. I don't have enough time to discuss all of them, so I'm sure you'll see me here again. I do not, I do not support your action to replace the current Health Department Director with Mr. Kelly. According to the Holland Sentinel, he is currently employed as a health safety manager in an area, in an area HVAC company. He has absolutely no previous experience in public health. He has been quoted as saying he would encourage people with COVID-19 to treat with vitamins, a neti pot use, and ivermectin, which, as you all know, is an animal medication used to treat parasites. It is fair to say that it has been approved for human use, treating head lice, stabies, and river blindness, and other parasitic disease. And I'm sure there are people that will line up and say, it worked for me, it worked for me, it worked for me, but it's not going to be me. I support Mrs. Hamley and as the state-approved Health Department Director, if you go ahead and decide to change that resolution that was passed in December, you are going to be spending my tax dollars, I believe, on a very fruitless legal fight. This goes without saying that I, I wonder how you decided to hire Mr. Kelly? Did you post that position? Did you seek candidates? Did you interview anyone? It seems to me that that name was floated to you by someone in Ottawa Impact and you decided he would be your guy long before you even voted, or long before you even sworn in as Commissioners. And I am so afraid that these actions are going to cost our county thousands and thousands and probably hundreds of thousands of dollars. I have a couple of other things I was going to say, but I'm going to just veer off a minute and make a comment that I heard about earlier before your board meeting about you taking up a resolution to make Ottawa County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. And at the same discussion that I heard was about your failure to accept $500,000, a half a million dollars for mental health. There is a connection between gun violence in this country and mental health. And if you continue to not recognize that, our county is going to suffer. You were elected to represent every single person in this county. Voted for you. I hope you will do.
Number 33, Robert Nada, Grand Haven Township. Roberta.
That's okay. I'm okay with that. My name is Roberta Nada. I'm from the Grand Haven Township. Number one, I would like to let you know that I do support the Ottawa County Republican Party on the resolution on the Second Amendment. Second, I'm not real knowledgeable about the Adeline and all the behind and how you get hired. However, is she not an at-will employee? Potentially, I guess with her coming in so quickly, wouldn't she think that perhaps she might not get hired or she might not be held onto? Just my opinion. All right. Getting to the rest of my things. I have been a registered nurse for 42 years. My entire career was spent at Hackley Hospital in Muskegon, very diverse population. Working in the hospital, I had many opportunities to change jobs. They included a neuroorthopedic floor obstetrics unit where I mainly worked labor and delivery. Then I finished up in an outpatient clinic known as a pain clinic. My greatest resources that I have come to use in the here and now is, number one, labor and delivery, helping moms through this miracle of life. I wasn't one that would not allow the father of the baby to be involved and they knew that. Number two, I worked in a pain clinic. I was taken back by how many medications some of my patients took. I would at times ask, are you full after all these pills? Plus, they didn't always know what they were for, as I always thought Big Pharma was the mafia when I was working there. And I would make a joke of it back then. I have been retired for about three years. Retired prior to the pandemic. Hospitals started masking protocols. Temps were being taken on healthy patients. PCR tests were also being checked on healthy people, along with our athletes on a daily basis. Pfizer gets EUA for vaccines. That stands for emergency use authorization. What that means is that they are no longer responsible for the liability if something were to happen to that person who got the vaccine. CDC wants all to have Jabs because they're safe and effective. Health Department encourages it. Clinics set up at schools and churches because they're safe and effective. Children with strong immune systems need them. I asked why? They were 99.9% would probably fight through it. Now hospital workers, companies, corporations mandating workers to get them. What are the side effects? They are safe and effective? Well, I have the Pfizer documentation to hand out to Gretchen, Lucy, and Joe. Pfizer was forced to put out analysis of post-authorization adverse events starting and shipped in December 2020 through February 2021. Pfizer wanted this held for 75 years, over 1,200 side effects at that time. This vaccine is attacking the fertility of both men and women. Miscarriages are on the increase. Fetal deaths following vaccines are 2,620. November 2021. VAERS, CDC, look it up.
Number 34 is Joe Spalding, Holland Township.
Hi, my name is Joe Spalding and I live in Holland Township. I would like to acknowledge that we are living on stolen Ottawa and Peoria and Knottson Abbey land. Three quick points and one big one. First, just outside those doors to the left, there's a painting of some Dutch dancers. Some of them are clearly women dressed like Dutch guys. I'm curious if you'd like to apologize, Joe, for sexualizing the children that happened to walk through the lobby. Second, you can't incarcerate yourself out of a natural gun problem. Our country has the highest incarceration rate on the planet. If locking people up stopped mass shootings, we would have more than, we wouldn't have more mass shootings than every other gun or every other developed country on the planet. It's the guns. Third, it's ironic that all y'all and Mr. Gibbs think digital public comments shouldn't be publicly available, but all you fascists think you can watch videos of old meetings to undo settled resolutions. But more importantly, if Jesus Christ Himself should return tomorrow, sorry, to exemplify the glory of the Son of our Lord in 2023, it's quite possible He would show up in this very room to start flipping tables. And I'm guessing you would have Him arrested because you would confuse Him for me. Not, wouldn't last long, though, because I'd be right behind Him to join, exalting your personal vendetta over state. Exalting your personal vendetta over state orders designed to help you overcome your pathetic and cowardly inability to truly love your neighbor as yourself, Joe Moss, all in the name of our Lord in vain and likely lies a bastardization of the value of freedom, have you no shame? You certainly have no conscience born out of any form of Christianity Christ himself would recognize or sanction. Believe in your heart when I tell you the conviction of my words stands on a solid bedrock of philosophy and theology with significant contributions from being raised devoutly Catholic in a very Dutch Reformed community. The breadth of my words is inseparable from the breadth that speaks the Gospel of Matthew and the pairing of equity and divine justice that is undoubtedly contained before you reach the end of the twenty-fifth chapter of that book, which I'm sure you've read. If Sylvia actually cared about protecting children, she would be on the forefront of stopping them where they're actually harmed in our community. I'm not going to hear a peep out of her about child labor, even though story broke in New York Times last week that we have child labor in our community with thirteen-year-olds going to pack food in food brackets or work on farms in West Michigan. We haven't heard a single word out of anybody on the board about making sure that our roads are safer, even though cars are one of the biggest threats to children. No, instead, we have Joe worried about his personal vendetta against the Health Administrator. Lucy is worried about the value of her property or why her neighbors are voting in ways she doesn't like. Gretchen's worried about not looking like a complete idiot, even though everyone knows that she is. Sylvia is worried about enforcing the rules in her mom voice to punish people she doesn't like. And Kyle's probably worried about when that next buckhead is going to come back from the taxidermist. None of you can care about, none of you care about the things that matter to this county. So when you're unelected, know this. It's because you're not, it's not because you're too conservative or because of a liberal and media conspiracy, and certainly not anti-Christian conspiracy. It's because you don't have better things to do than to make sure you're in a position to bully trans kids in our community or ban books or defund mental health care. God have mercy on your souls.
Thank you.
Number thirty-five is Melanie Sculton, Park Township.
Hi. My name is Melanie Sculton. I live in Park Township. I am a lifelong resident of Ottawa County. I have been following you closely, as all of us here have, and I'm curious about your motivation for wanting to be Ottawa County Commissioners. Why did you want to be elected? Are you here to govern? That is, are you here to find and leverage opportunities to improve the lives of Ottawa County residents? Or is there a different motivation? To many of us, it feels like you are here to impose your own narrow agenda on us. And so far, you have not proven us wrong. If you are here to govern, why are you even considering rejecting over half a million dollars of grant money to hire mental health professionals who will improve the lives of countless residents? It's not even county money. It is money that someone wants to give us to improve our lives. Why is there any question about accepting it? Are you here to govern or are you here to impose? If you are here to govern, why are you spending so much time, energy, and unbudgeted county money to oust a longstanding, highly qualified, educated, experienced, and loyal county employee? The gymnastics you are attempting today further fits your pattern of sneaky, underhanded, unethical, and borderline illegal behavior. Are you here to govern or are you here to impose? If you are here to govern, why has it taken nearly a month to approve one appointment of one member to one committee? Someone who is willing to sacrifice precious time and energy to improve the lives of fellow residents. Someone who is the only one that has stepped up to do so. And if you do not appoint them, again, grant money will be lost. Why is there any question about appointing this person? Are you here to govern or are you here to impose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Number thirty-six is Virginia Greenlee, Park Township.
I want to first of all thank all the Commissioners that are here. It is clearly evident that we have a spiritual war, a war of good versus evil. I am here in favor of Nathan Kelly as a Health Director for Ottawa County. We need somebody that can think outside of the political box with truth and righteousness. Someone that can question and do deep dives as to the true science versus the fake science. There's been enough evidence of the fake science. I've been in the medical field for over twenty-five years. I worked in both the medical and the educational field, and there is plenty of information out there that is false and fraudulent. And yes, Dr. Fauci is Dr. Fauci. We need to be able to not comply to corrupt CDC guidelines or any agency succumbing to financial incentives, compensation, or similar. Many of us know that COVID-19 compensation caused hospitals to follow deadly protocols with predictable steps that resulted in many unnecessary deaths via the use of remdesivir, which harmed the kidneys, which led to the use of ventilators, which caused deaths. It was not because of COVID. To date, there is not one autopsy that is a pure COVID death. Look it up. However, money was well received, even to the tune of up to $300,000 for a COVID death. Speaking of money, how much was spent for DEI to the tune of over 685,000? Needlessly, unnecessarily? We cannot depend on coerced. We cannot depend on a leader that will be coerced, intimidated, tempted, or threatened to go along with the play scripts that created fear porn, a false sense of safety, and case demics, invalid PCR tests, or approval from evil men or government. Our highest authority is God. We need to have approval from Him, not from evil men. It is our duty before God to obey, and most people obey, most people believe in a God, recognizing that none of us are perfect, none of us are sinless, none of us are unblemished, perfect in holiness, or untainted by the flesh of the world and the devil. We all fall short of the glory of God. However, it is to Him that we must answer to foremost. There's only one Creator, one King of kings. Only one God can sit on the thrones of our hearts. You can't be your own God. You didn't make yourself. We must acknowledge the delegated authority from God himself, the God of order and good governance. We are God servants to do good, not evil. We should not, we should actually get terror to anything evil.
Thank you.
Number thirty-seven, Anne Henriksen, Zealand City.
Anne Henriksen, Zealand City, actually. I just wonder how you got here. You got elected. And I know how you got elected. You got elected because of how hard you campaigned, and people believe in you, and they still do, keep doing what you're doing. Because what happened before with the previous Commissioners, we could see what was happening. And you stepped in. No wonder there was such a fight. They want to keep you away from what should happen in this community. And I'm very proud of you. Stay in it. It's not easy. Fortune five hundred companies across the United States have adopted the DEI in all of their corporations. And what is happening is that the people of religious freedoms are being fired because they're saying they believe in a man and a woman makes a marriage. They're being fired because they won't take a shot. You're protecting all of us. And when you talk about Freedom Ring, this is freedom to be an American. I shouldn't have to take a shot. It does not protect you or me. I should be able to have the freedom to make that choice. I should have the freedom to say the word Jesus. And I should have a freedom. My children should have the freedom to go out and put a cross on a piece of paper in their schoolroom or wear a T-shirt that says what their faith is. The DEI is anti-religion, period, end. And it's not just Christian. It's any. They do not want us to have any, and that's the DEI, and the previous Commissioners allowed that to come in. The sex education that was established in the Health Department was plain and simple. It was Planned Parenthood. And if you read what Planned Parenthood believes in, they believe in clearly that children are going to do it anyway. They just want to teach them how to do it safely. And that's when you came up to those websites to find out how children should be taught to do their sexual pleasures. That is not the way you raise children. You don't raise little children and give them opportunities to say they don't have to believe they're the sex that they were born with. This is what you're doing to children. You're talking about the future generation? The future generation isn't even going to have an identity.
Thank you.
Number thirty-eight is Tara Angus, Georgetown Township.
I'd like you all to take just a moment, take out maybe something to write with. I have three, well, actually, I have five words for you. Don't leave money on the table. Don't leave money on the table. Those of you that own businesses or work in sales know exactly what that means. That means before you leave a meeting, you don't leave actual money on the table. You close the deal. You make the sale. You make it happen. My name is Tara Angus. I live in Georgetown Township. Approximately one hundred and eighty-five days out of the year, I leave Kyle's district. I drive through Joe's. I drive through Sylvia's, and I end in Allison's district. I'm a school counselor. I'm very proud of it. One of the most-used agencies that I use as a school counselor is the Community of Mental Health. If I have a student in my office and they are actively suicidal, they are on Medicaid, that is their insurance. They perhaps don't have private pay for various reasons. There's all different reasons why people are on Medicaid. The only access that they can have to mental health care and to be screened for suicide is through CMH. Ottawa County requires that that student be taken by their parents to Holland Hospital. Oftentimes, as a school counselor, we're able to call ahead. You know, we have clearance from the parent. We're given that info. We clear ahead. More than once on one occasion this school year, Holland Hospital has been full. They have not been able to take that student for assessment. Students wait hours and hours and hours. The need for increased CMH care, for no matter the reason, no matter the person, is increasing. Don't leave money on the table. Today, implore all of you, please put the work date on the calendar. Someone, please add it to your agenda. Get that date booked. Don't leave money on the table. Our children need you. Perhaps maybe someday your children will need it. Perhaps they will need the access to mental health care. Please don't let my students go without. Put it on the table. Get it on the agenda. Get it, that work date. Please do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number thirty-nine, Deb Ralia, Holland City.
Good evening. I'm here to give my support tonight to Ms. Brittany Brown. I was on the Advisory Board for Community Action Agency for a three-year term that ended in December twenty twenty-one. The process for that was I was, first of all, recruited to be on the board. Second of all, I was interviewed by the Program Director. Then I went to an Advisory Board meeting as a guest and was approved by the Advisory Board. The Program Director then wrote a letter of support on my behalf, and it came to the Board of Commissioners for approval. This is the same process that Jennifer Brzezinski has followed in the selection and recommendation of Ms. Brown. As a qualified consumer sector candidate, Ms. Brown will bring an experienced voice to the Advisory Board. She deserves your support. She deserves your support tonight. As the Board of Commissioners, your work is to provide oversight. Oversight simply means to ensure that Program Directors are doing their job, not doing their job for them. So I think there are two questions you need to ask tonight before approving Ms. Brown. The first question is, did Jennifer Brzezinski follow the expected process? The answer is yes. Does Ms. Brown meet the qualifications for this volunteer position? The answer is yes. So when you approve Ms. Brown tonight, you'll have ensured that Michigan Federal Block Grant money for CAA is not jeopardized. Funding's at risk if the Advisory Board doesn't have the tripartite requirements or meet the tripartite requirements, which they don't meet right now with this vacancy. When you approve Ms. Brown tonight, you'll help ensure all voices are heard at the table, and she'll speak for all the people that are served by the CAA programs. So it's time, it's time for this Board of Commissioners to unanimously approve the appointment of Ms. Brown and do it tonight.
Thank you.
Number forty, Cindy Spielmaker, Grand Haven City.
Hi, I'm Cindy Spielmaker. I live in Grand Haven. I'm here to express my concerns about the tactics you're using to push the Ottawa-Impact agenda. These tactics are based on one principle: fear. At the start of your term, you set the stage to govern by fear, and you've continued to keep that fear going. When I listen to you and the Ottawa-Impact followers, what I hear is fear. Fear of sexual health education, fear of diversity, fear of anything different than what you believe. You stoke that fear by not correcting the perception that the county funded the GVSU Sex Ed Week. You know that the county did not fund or sponsor this. You create fear by your treatment of Adeline Hamley, the Administrative Health Officer. Your targeting of Ms. Hamley and public health in general creates an environment of fear for employees. Your attempts to replace a highly qualified professional with someone unqualified creates fear in the community and among those who rely on public health services. Your governance by fear continues by not approving the eight community mental health positions for no apparent reason. The positions Community Mental Health Director Lynn Doyle is requesting are grant-funded and would greatly benefit the community. You're not able to give clear reasons as to why you haven't approved them. This lack of response engenders fear with an already overworked staff and a client population that are waiting for mental health services. And now you want to turn our county into a Second Amendment sanctuary county. As of mid-February, the Gun Violence Archive counted eighty-one mass shootings in the United States this year alone. That's an average of more than one per day, including the recent horror at Michigan State. Many of us in this county were anxious and fearful, waiting to hear if our loved ones in East Lansing were safe. If you approve the resolution submitted to you from the Ottawa County GOP, you will be continuing to create division and fear. As elected officials, it seems your job would be to calm fears, not stoke them, and to work to establish open communication and understanding of all your constituents, not just those involved in Ottawa-Impact.
Thank you.
Number forty-one is Lisa Royce, Ferrisburg.
I was out of the country on January third. I was in Spain watching this committee come together, and obviously, you guys met beforehand because you could have never done the agenda that you did. I know that Dana Nessel said, I know open meetings acts are hard to do. We've been having issues in Ferrisburg. Roger probably knows me very well from my time talking in Grand Haven, Ferrisburg, Spring Lake Township. I used to do this quite often. Your transparency or lack thereof is astonishing on what this board has done. You could not have done the stuff at that first meeting without meeting beforehand. And I find it appalling that, that you don't just represent the small, thirty-four percent of Ottawa County voted for you guys. That in turn is the problem with Ottawa County. We need to vote. I've grown up in Ottawa County. My grandparents had a a business in downtown Grand Haven, Wheeler Drug Store back in the day. Roger probably remembers them because he's the only one I recognize in this whole group of people. My father was a school teacher. I was a daycare provider for twenty-two years. I have a daughter that, thank God, moved to Ireland, so she's safe from gun violence, where they restrict that part of it. I bought a house in Spain because the far right totally freaks me out, and I promised my friends if And I promised my friends, if Donald Trump ever decided to run again, I was buying a, a place somewhere else, and that's exactly what I did. Well, wow. It, it, it's just amazing. You, you, you guys seem to think that it's okay. You talk about mental health and, and you need to get that money and not leave it on the table. I cannot believe that this community is okay with children from preschool doing active shooter drills in school. Talk about mental health. Astonishing, astonishing. I, I, I just we have a long time and people will come together. You created something, and, and that was, I guess, the thing that I, when I was gone, because I was at the last meeting, but I was number sixty-one and just got back from being gone, so I, I turned in my number to speak, but astonishing, and, and I hope you reverse everything that you did at that first meeting because it was a lack of transparency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number forty-two, Rebecca Patrick, Allen, Dale Township.
I am Rebecca Patrick from Allen Dale Township. Commissioners, I came here tonight to plead with you to please stop the drama and outrage because that is the only thing that you are known for in the short time you've been in existence as a board. I don't know if some of you relish it. Maybe some of you view it as good strategy or as a means of consolidating power, causing confusion, tying up resources, and getting what you want. But the rest of you know that that's not good government. It's destructive, it's expensive, and it's morally wrong. And it treats Ottawa County, its employees, its residents, its taxpayers, its business community, its visitors like pawns in some kind of Game of Thrones. You've caused all this damage and ill will and accomplished nothing of value for the average citizen. And now there are even worse things looming on the horizon. It looks like you're going to consider a troubling resolution from the Ottawa County Republican Party to designate Ottawa County as a sanctuary county for the Second Amendment. So what does that mean? Wikipedia tells us that such counties want to prohibit or impede enforcement of certain gun control measures. It's quite, quite the thing to have your elected officials perhaps telling us that laws don't matter, that the Michigan Legislature doesn't matter, that the US Congress doesn't matter, that you, who are elected officials who took an oath to uphold the state and federal constitutions, are effectively being asked by your party to support anarchy. Commissioners, do you plan to consider this resolution? Can you see the irony, as somebody pointed out a few minutes ago, of comparing this to the foot dragging regarding the mental health grants that you've been asked to approve? Are you going to reveal yourselves as nothing more than divisive, destructive ideologues who care nothing for the rule of law and who are willing to betray your oath of office for political gain? Or can you please stop with the drama and the outrage and start to demonstrate that you truly can be people who seek the good and the peace of the whole community?
Thank you.
Number forty-four, Deborah Seizik, Port Sheldon Township.
Deb Seizik, Port Sheldon Township, District One. You are public servants. You are here to serve the public and not be self-serving. Many of you, particularly those who signed the Ottawa Impact Contract, need to rethink your purpose and the privilege you have been given. This community has worked for years to be more inclusive, diverse, and equitable. It can be uncomfortable, maybe even a bit scary, if you do not take the time to understand others that do not fit inside your box. You can start by approving Brittany Brown as a consumer sector member. Your job is to oversee that the correct process was followed and the candidate meets qualification, which it did on both accounts. Time is money, and the county risks losing grant funding if this voluntary position is not approved. Accept and approve a half million dollars in federal grant monies to provide extended mental health services. You may not see the value or need, but those who work in health services do. It's their job. Trust them. Community mental health serves those with substance abuse disorders, people with intellectual and developmental disorders, as well as mental illness. This money is a gift to Ottawa County residents. It is not yours to scrutinize. Extend gratitude to our healthcare employees who pursue these grants on behalf of county residents. They are on the front lines and they know the needs. Allow discussion among your own commissioners, how quickly the chair and vice chair dismiss other viewpoints being shared, or if a commissioner speaks on behalf of their district constituents. Do your homework, do your due diligence, and be respectful of others who beg to differ with your pre-arranged agenda by allowing a voice other than Ottawa Impact. Basically, practice what you preached. Sound governance, community trust, a willingness to listen with the public and amongst yourselves. May I paraphrase Atticus Finch from To Kill a Mockingbird? If you learn a simple trick, Ottawa Impact, you'll get along a lot better with all kinds of folks. You never really understand a person until you consider things from his point of view, until you climb inside of his skin and walk around in it. The Freedom Bell is being silenced for far too many in our county. Remind yourselves of your purpose and act on behalf of all county residents, where we all belong, not just those you are aligned with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number forty-five, Jerry Morlock, Grand Haven City.
Hi, my name is Jerry Morlock. I'm from the city of Grand Haven. As a forty-year county resident, I'm here today because I'm opposed to Ottawa Impact Majority's continual efforts to push its own narrow agenda rather than what's best for the county and its taxpayers as a whole. Your apparent attempt to rewrite history by unhiring Eddie Hambley as the county health officer is ridiculous, underhanded, and maybe illegal. And dragging your feet on community mental health grant-funded positions is dumbfounding and inexcusable. Why would you stand in the way of services provided for some of our most vulnerable citizens? And next, are we headed for an attempt to declare Ottawa County exempt from the laws of Michigan that we don't like? We'll follow the ones that we do? I ask Ottawa Impact Commissioners, those, excuse me, those not in the leadership, is this really what you signed up for? Was your goal ever to serve Ottawa County residents? Or was your intent from the beginning only to divide, confuse, and disrupt? It seems like the time has come to decide whether you will think for yourself or be only loyal unquestioning soldiers in someone else's culture war. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number forty-six, Yvonne Olmstead, Grand Haven City.
Hello, my name is Yvonne Olmstead, and I'm a resident of Grand Haven. I'm here to support Adeline Hambley for the Ottawa County Administrative Health Office, Officer. I was concerned when, at the January third, two thousand twenty-three Ottawa County Commissioners' meeting, she was demoted and appointed as interim administrative health officer. This was not a good or a fair decision. With her experience as an environmental public health director since two thousand and eleven, she is fully qualified to be the county administrative health officer. The position of Ottawa County Administrative Health Officer requires a person to meet the standards of the Michigan Health Code. The health officer represents the department to local, state, and federal officials, community members, and community sector leaders to work together to ensure conditions that protect, protect and promote health. Fully qualified Ms. Hambley is the best person for this position. She has a good enforcement philosophy, connecting with people to correct any deficiency that, that come up, working along with business rather than to immediately issue citations. I trust Adeline to bring about the best for the residents of Ottawa County. According to the Michigan Administrative Code, number three, two-five-one-three-zero-zero-three, candidates under consideration for a county administrative health officer must hold the following qualifications: a master of public health degree or a master of science in public health degree, and three years of full-time public health administrative experience. A related graduate degree and five years of full-time public health administrative experience. A bachelor's degree and eight years of full-time public health experience. Five years of in the administration of a broad range of public health programs. Adeline Hambley has worked in the Ottawa County Health Department for nearly nineteen years, has served as environmental health manager since two thousand and eleven. She was hired as health officer on December twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, after being interviewed by a five-person interview panel. She was unanimously recommended for the position and, and has been approved by the state as a health officer. She has a bachelor's, bachelor's degree in biology and an MBA from Grand Valley State University, an accredited university. Now the board wants to undercut the qualifications of Ottawa County Administrative Health Officer and bring in someone who has online degrees and certifications from a questionable way out of the state university. That would be very disheartening. Ottawa County needs the expertise and experience that Adeline Hambley can give us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number forty-seven is Justine Robinson, Holland Township.
I didn't start my time yet. Uh, today is the last day of Black History. I like to remind people that our civil rights were won by people who fought for diversity, science, free, uh, health and education freedom for all, not radical Christians or Bible-thumping Christians, or, you know, insecure people who buy guns instead of compen, to compensate for their lack of size or education. Not people who are afraid or upset about sexuality and sexual freedom because they never experienced an orgasm. Not those people. And especially not a board that was a majority funded by wealthy religious fascists. Excuse me. Um, but our civil rights were fought for people who weren't, who were not afraid to confront themselves, to look at themselves, introspect, look at where they are at our history, to read, educate themselves, not look at TikToks or Facebook as references. People who are self-aware of their physical and mental health, something, an experienced health official, only if we had one or something like that, you know, was already voted in in December. You know, maybe we should have them in charge instead of putting a guy who is conspiracy theorist who has an HVAC background. This community definitely needs mental health services, and you are not aiding in that in the most crucial, crucial time in our, in history where gun manuf, where gun manufacturers are advertising on social media, Proud Boys and, you know, known militia terrorists, and I think you need to reevaluate your morals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number forty-nine is Marley McDonald, Holland City.
Hi, everyone. I'm Marley McDonald, and I'm the president of Hope College Democrats. As a college student graduating in a couple of years, I have a pretty good idea of how I'm going to choose where I want to live. I know it won't be in a place where I have to worry about the goodwill and integrity of the local government. As young people, we will choose to grow up and raise a family here because we don't want to live in a county where commissioners are only looking for themselves and people who think similarly to them, rather than the less fortunate or the newcomers. I don't want to live in a place or raise my kids where diversity, equity, and inclusion aren't celebrated and recognized. My college is committed to these things. Why is it that you don't seem to be placing the same value upon it? We value reproductive health education at all levels of education. We value that everyone be recognized as unique and welcome in a community who accepts them. Ottawa Impact is not good government. You are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money replacing dedicated civil servants and longtime local government partners of the county with political appointees who are in place to be obedient and agreeable to Impact's narrow and activist agenda. On behalf of Hope Democrats, we are ashamed of the recent actions of our county that our college calls home. Hope College in Ottawa County will forever be a part of my and our professional identities, and we're disappointed to see the recent events play out. We want to call on our board and the community as a whole to prevent Ottawa County from becoming a place that isn't where we belong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number fifty is Anita Brown, Olive Township.
Good evening. My name is Anita Brown. I live in Holland, Olive Township. I have been living in Ottawa County, Holland, Michigan, for the last forty years, raising our children and our grandchildren here. I came to the meeting tonight because I was astounded to see that you were going to deny or refuse a grant of a half a million dollars for mental health services in Ottawa County. In two thousand and twenty, when the COVID-nineteen hit, and the pandemic was there, we were screaming, "Mental health, mental health." What happened? Where is the need not there now? We need that more than ever now in the zero-to-five programs for our children. If you do not see a need base for adults, you need to reflect on what is going on with the children who are COVID babies. They are entering preschool, zero-to-five programs. Social emotional development is a must. So in order for them to get those social emotional supports in the classroom, you have to hire mental health consultants to come into the classrooms and identify these services that need to be made and align them up with the service agents outside, to come into the classrooms and work with the staff, to support the staff so that they can offer the services to the students with reassurance that they're supported emotionally. Not only financially, they do not get met well, teachers, but nevertheless, the mental health portion of this, there is a program out there called KEEP, if none of you are familiar with it, for Kent County, Keep Early Education Positive. If you do not catch kids zero to five in that age bracket, they're on a one-way track to jail, juvenile hall, and detention. If they do not catch and get the services they needed from zero to five entering into elementary school, middle school, they fall into the cracks. So that half a million dollar grant that's not going to cost you a penny to get and use and utilize it into services for our community, you cannot turn that grant away, knowing that the amount of children in Ottawa County that need those services, those parents and families that are struggling with children that are in zero-to-five programs, getting ready to go into the middle school or the elementary school in years to come, trying to work outside the home, they need those services. And by it being a grant, it's not going to hurt their pocketbook, let alone having to pay for extra daycare, because those services are already contracted out through the funding of that grant. So I'm just saying to reevaluate what you can do with a half a million dollars for Ottawa County, for our zero-to-five programs. If you cannot identify mental health services beyond an adult or a teenager, which is very important also, but you got to look at the bottom up. Zero-to-five programs are what we need support with. These teachers need support. You know, COVID didn't just affect people emotionally and psychologically. Teachers going back into the classroom now because it's all over. Where's COVID, right? We need that funding for these children. Thank you.
Number fifty-three is Barbara Van Horst, Grand Haven City.
Barbara Lee Van Horst, resident of the city of Grand Haven and the experimenter at the Momentum Center. A number of people have spoken so eloquently to the need for all of the mental health services we can possibly acquire that I'm going to talk a little more- That I'm going to talk a little more broadly about the idea of power. As our county commissioners, you yield a great deal of power. Power is the capacity or ability to direct or influence the behavior of others or the course of events. It's the ability to make things happen. Power makes decisions like who gets access to resources. Most often, the people with power are people in society who enjoy certain privileges. I missed one of our recent commission meetings because I had the privilege of being on a cultural immersion experience. Uh, we lead cultural immersion because we believe it's the fastest way to help people see the lens through which they see the world. But you don't have to travel across the country to have that experience. You only need to be willing to truly listen to people whose lives are different, who've had different experiences. And who view the world differently. To know that our life experiences are genuinely different and as a result, we see the world through different lenses. When we understand that, we can stop being defensive about our own views and become curious. About the views and experiences of others. I've been at a number of these meetings and I'm struck by both the various displays of power on one hand and the fear of being powerless on the other. I hear people wanting to be seen and people wanting to be heard. We are neighbors, we are coworkers, we are all constituents. We have lived different experiences and we have different perspectives. So if we really want what's best for our community, then we have to find ways to talk to each other without demonizing each other. So I want to challenge all of us, including myself, to try to listen, to let go of defensiveness and to become curious. One place that we can do that together is the envisioning our future forums that the Grand Haven Chamber of Commerce is presenting. That series began this morning with a conversation about the infinite game. In which the strategy isn't to win or to lose, but to stay in the game for the long run. Much of the conversation centered on the need to be intentional about bringing a variety of different viewpoints and perspectives into the conversation. As together, we need to be a community that envisions the future. So I'm reaching across all that divides us, asking us each to see and use our power as citizens of this community. To join in that conversation so that we can find a starting point that centers in respect. And that creates the momentum to carry all of us forward together. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Number fifty-four is Kayden Hembrow from Georgetown Township.
Good evening. Uh, I'll be reading a transcript from a Christian radio broadcast by Paul Harvey all the way back in nineteen sixty-five. Titled, If I Were the Devil. If I were the prince of darkness, I'd want to engulf the whole world in darkness and I'd have a third of its real estate and four-fifths of its population. But I wouldn't be happy until I had seized the ripest apple on the tree. The, so it said about however necessary to take over the United States. I'd subvert the churches first. I'd begin with a campaign of whispers. With the wisdom of a serpent, I would whisper to you as I whispered to Eve, do as you please. To the young, I would whisper that the Bible is a myth. I would convince them that man created God instead of the other way around. I would confide that what's bad is good and what's good is square. And the old, I would teach to pray after me, our Father, which art in Washington. And then I'd get organized and educate authors and how to make allured literature exciting. So anything else would appear dull and uninteresting. I'd threaten TV with dirtier movies and vice versa. I'd peddle narcotics to whom I could. I'd sell alcohol to ladies and gentlemen of distinction. I tranquilize the rest with pills. If I were the devil, I'd soon have families that war with themselves, churches at war with themselves and nations at war with themselves. Until each in its turn was consumed. And with promises of higher ratings, I'd have mesmerizing media fanning the flames. If I were the devil, I would encourage schools to refine young intellects, but neglect to discipline emotions. Just let those run wild until before you knew it, you'd have to have drug sniffing dogs and metal detectors at every schoolhouse door. Within a decade, I'd have prisons overflowing. I'd have judges promoting pornography. Soon I could evict God from the courthouse, then from the schoolhouse, and then from the houses of Congress. And in his own churches, I would substitute psychology for religion and deify science. I would lure priests and pastors and the misusing boys and girls and church money. If I were the devil, I'd make the symbols of Easter an egg and the symbol of Christmas a bottle. If I were the devil, I'd take from those who have and give to those who want until I'd killed the incentive of the ambitious. And what do you bet? I could get whole states to promote gambling as the way to get rich. I would caution against extremes and hard work and patriotism and moral conduct. I would convince the young that marriage is old-fashioned, that swinging is more fun. That what you see on TV is the way to be. And thus I could undress you in public and I could lure you into bed with diseases for which there is no cure. In other words, if I was the devil, I'd just keep on doing what he's doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number fifty-five is Jim Kuiper, Holland Township.
Mister Chairman and fellow board members and honored guests. Your plates are full. I can hear that from the conversations that have been going on tonight and. It's a tough job you have to do. And I appreciate all of your efforts to do what you're doing. I want to resoundly commend that you approved the resolution. Proposed by the Ottawa County Executive Committee regarding Ottawa County as a sanctuary county. I think that speaks volumes to what. Majority of people really want. You've heard a lot of divergent opinions tonight on a divergent a number of topics. And I think the important thing is to remember that we're all brothers and we love everybody, no matter what their opinion is. So long as they're free to express it. I think that's crucial. And I think that, as I've said before. The basic foundation of the family is where all the. Issues begin. And if we can educate our youngsters. And bring them up in the in the way that. We want them to be brought up rather than subjecting them to outside influences. Will be. Much further ahead. It's going to be a long process. It doesn't happen overnight. But this is a start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number fifty-six Denise Newhouse, Holland Township.
Hi. I'm Denise Newhouse and I live in Holland Township. I'm here as a special needs adopted mom. Twenty-seven years ago, we adopted our son. We've been fighting for him for twenty-seven years. School, public school didn't help, so we went to private. And then when he became an adult, he went off his meds. He wanted nothing to do with mom. And he moved into the latter homes in October of twenty nineteen. And he was there until May of twenty twenty-three. At that point, he was given a one-month eviction notice for no reason except for to renovate the basement. So with thirty days trying to find a place in this town, there's not a whole lot. And before, while we were moving him out, we ended up throwing most of the stuff away because they had terrible bedbug infestations. And we didn't want to move that to him. And also when he was there, there were bats in the house. So he woke up one night with a bat on his head. Our son's on the autism spectrum. That just created all kinds of more problems and a series of rabies shots. And from there, you know, there was PTSD and more sleep problems, which, you know, there's no help for. Um, in June, he moved in with an elderly lady. Because that's all we could find and we were hopeful this would work. And they were sharing a double wide, but it was south side of Holland. So he was in Alleghan County. So everything needed to be transferred to Alleghan County and we don't know anything about Alleghan County. I've lived in Ottawa County my entire life. So he received an eviction notice and he was supposed to be out today. We have called everywhere and his fear, which is a legitimate fear because to be homeless in Ottawa County. You have to live in the shelter, which you can only stay there fourteen days. Or you need to live outside. Or in a place unfit for habitation. We moved him home today. Because he had been sick this past week, throwing up with anxiety. Because he thought he was going to be in a park tonight, freezing to death. I am just ashamed to say that I live in Ottawa County and my son is one of the least of these. And there's nothing for him. Please help us. We need safe places for our special needs for the very vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number fifty-seven is Paul Kick from Genesee.
Good evening. My name is Paul Kick. I'm from Genesee. Thank you all for your time and listening to the massive amounts of people here tonight. Um, I'm here to talk about the proposal set by the Ottawa County GOP. Both our federal government and state government have several concerning anti-gun proposals in various committees currently. All of these infringe on our rights, which are clearly stated in the Constitution under the Second Amendment. I want to express my support of the resolution from the Ottawa County Republican Party to make Ottawa County a Second Amendment sanctuary county. According to sanctuarycounties.com, sixty-one percent of all counties in the US are protected by legislation either at a local or state level already. Why is conservative Ottawa County not on this list? We don't need more laws for gun control. If we just followed what God commanded us to do in Exodus twenty verse thirteen, the sixth commandment, you should not murder. The world would be a much better place. If anything, we need to get rid of some gun laws, one being gun-free zones, or as I call them, mass murder zones. This, as this is where the defenseless, where people are defenseless to protect themselves and other innocent people from those who wish to do them harm. The only way to stop a bad person with a gun is to have a good person with a gun. This is the reason why people, isn't this the reason why people call the police? However, the police themselves will tell you they can't get to an incident in time to stop the evil from being carried out. People need to be able to defend themselves. Inanimate objects do not harm people. Saying guns kill people is a statement meant to gaslight the public and push a narrative. It would be the same logic as saying, do you want to stop drunk drivers from killing sober drivers, then ban so, then ban sober drivers from driving? However, we all know that people is the problem, not a gun problem. It is hearts without God, homes without discipline, schools without prayer and courtrooms without justice. In Genesis, we are told Cain killed Abel with a rock. Do we ban rocks? There's been murdering of the unborn for fifty years. People have no life for that, no value for life in itself. Back when I was in high school, we often, we often had our hunting guns in the trunks of our cars. Teachers knew it and we had no school shootings. Let's use the same narrative on abortions, which the left pushes on gun control. It would go something like this, calm down, no one's coming for your abortions. We just want common sense abortion control, mandatory background checks, complete with mental health evaluation. You must be placed on a one-year wait period. Although assault abortions, the first trimester and limit the number of abortions you can have. No one needs more than one abortion. The left's demand gun control after every shooting, but never demand border control after every rape and murder by an illegal alien. Interesting fact, the left didn't go after the gun in the Kyle Rittenhouse case, but instead after the person. Why is that? Second Amendment does not only apply to some, does not. Apply to semi-automatic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Number fifty-eight is Phil Kyers, Robinson Township.
Good evening. Phil Kyers, resident of Robson Township. I just want to go on record as saying that when I made the motion on December thirteen to install Adley Hamley. That it was unanimous between all the commissioners and we had no intention of voting again to install her. She was installed once and that's where she belongs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number sixty Roger Williams, Grand Haven City.
I'm Roger Williams from Grand Haven. Much has been made of the fact that Ottawa Impact candidate signed a contract. I'll pause there because it is claimed this was a contract with Ottawa Impact, but it's actually a contract with the Ottawa County residents. I'm forced to wonder for these complaining, have they read it? Well, since the so-called, since so-called democracy dies in darkness, let's shine some light on this contract. Here are the six main points publicly available to read, which makes the hysterics over it that much more absurd. One, promote and protect liberty and freedom by valuing the people of Ottawa County above the interests of government corporations and special interests. Two, govern with the least force and least authority required, allowing citizens maximum opportunity to make their own decisions. Three, promote, want due process and defend the rights and liberties of the people of Ottawa County. So the people may live without fear of reprisal or intimidation from local elected officials and staff. Four, defend the moral responsibility of parents and legal guardians to maintain control of the, of the care and upbringing of the children, which must not be usurped by local government. Or the government school system. Five, honor all people equally due to their individual intrinsic value and worth, reject ideology that segregates people into groups. To justify treating them differently. Six, use common sense courage in the Constitution when making decisions in my elected role. To borrow a phrase from one of the foremost liberal philosophers of our time, Greta Thunberg, how dare you? How dare, how dare you not tell me what I have to wear on my face? How dare you not limit what I was, I'm allowed to go down in stores? How dare you not tell me when I can and can't go to this school and work? How dare you not force me to take vaccinations? How dare you allow me to make my own decisions? How dare you allow me to parental rights? How dare you not try to control every aspect of my life and how dare you allow me to exercise freedom and liberty? This is so unfascistic of you, despite so many claiming you're fascist. It's almost like that word doesn't mean what they think it means, despite some claiming not to use that word lightly. I guess some don't like it when you unleash freedom or. Like, uh, it's not ringing a bell right now, but there's a motto in there somewhere, but I'm sure y'all are on top of that. In the, in the wake of the Michigan State tragedy, I've heard talk of so-called common sense gun laws. I'd like to know how additional gun laws will stop someone who is intent on breaking the laws against murder. Are there killers out there that would be ready to break murder laws who think twice because the gun laws are more strict? Or will they disregard the more strict gun laws right along with the murder laws? This seems evident with just a little critical thinking, but when schools stop teaching critical thinking in favor of critical theory. I guess logic is a little harder to come by. Lastly, congratulations on Dana Nessel rightly realizing you did nothing wrong on your first board meeting. Though I can't help wondering if she was a little more hesitant knowing you have adequate legal counsel rather than what you inherited. Either way, congrats. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number sixty-one is Eric Johnson, Spring Lake Village.
Hi, my name is Eric Johnson. I'm from the village of Spring Lake and I just want to remind the board that. We operate under a constitutional republic, not a democracy. Uh, we elected you to represent the overwhelming majority of Ottawa County. And I just wanted to thank you guys for your efforts in protecting our constitutional rights. With regard to the Ottawa County Republicans' decision to support the Second Amendment. Fully support that. And that's it. Thank you very much, people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number sixty-two Joseph Alfonso, Holland Township.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joseph Alfonso. I live in Holland Charter Township. Uh, some familiar faces, some faces I'm not too familiar with here, so good evening. I have a few words to say and now that we have some time to watch this new commission. According to Ottawa Impact, they consider these values to be their guiding force, preserve and protect individual rights. Of the people of Ottawa County, including freedom of speech, freedom of association, due process, the sanctity of conscience and many other things. And these are the actual ways they're trying to legislate according to reports reviewing the votes in previous commission meetings. Hiring a law firm that clearly has conflict of interest, refusing an already approved leader of a department. These actions are nothing more than an attempt to take power away from the residents of this great county. You are all public servants. If you aspire for something bigger, painting our community is a cautionary tale. And lacking leadership for the nation to report on is not the way. The people of this county are embarrassed. The people of this county are embarrassed by this political catfighting and has caused us to be the focal point for clickbait media and has given Ottawa County the kind of attention we never seek. But it doesn't have to be that way. You can and should realize that you're in a position to govern. That's why people voted for you. This county deserves to have worked towards the future and improve our county instead of being stuck in the past. So to close this out, just remember your oath. Remember, there are those who want our community to be seen as accepting and never forget that the will of the people will prove final if you continue to divide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number sixty-three, Jeremy Bosch, Allen Dale Township.
Good evening. Um, my name is Jeremy. Um, I was gonna show you a, a video of my parenting time from a friend of the court. However, there's kids in here. I don't want other kids to hear my kids scream. So, um, as before, I spoke about the friend of the court, how my issues with them. Uh, my, my kids have been subject to an abuser in the home. Uh, the guardian at light on that was appointed to my case and my investigator were both shown this video. Uh, sent email and respond, haven't responded at all. Um, since then, I haven't been able to speak with my kids because of obvious reasons. However, instead of reporting it to the proper authorities, as the handbook in front of the court says on page two, they went to the mother to let her know that I have a video of her significant other abusing my son. My son's nine. Her, he was nine the first time he talked to me about wanting to kill himself. So I took him to a therapist. So when I was in court, they used my mental health from my time in the service against me. Now I see them three days out of a year. And I have two younger ones that I had full custody when their mom left. She tricked me to send them to her. Now she uses them to get her citizenship. I see them three days out of a month. The guardian alight him. Since when I contacted him, he blocked me, doesn't want me to talk to him. He had me pay a thousand dollars for a full investigation. He investigated me, not the significant other. If he did, he would know that significant other has three domestic violence convictions and he assaulted me in front of my children on my son's birthday on March twenty-three, two thousand nineteen. As far as I'm concerned, it's all about money. My investigator, eight hours after my son passed, my investigator called me to remind me of my child support obligations. However, they failed to report child abuse, even suspected child abuse to a proper authority. So I asked people of Ottawa County to look into then guardian alight him, now a referee, which is terrifying to me. Um, and investigator, I won't say names, but if you did your research, you find out who it is. So, um, I'd like for a friend of the court to start taking kids seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number sixty-four is Liz Ramey, Allen Dale Township.
Hi guys, Liz Ramey of Allen Dale Township. So I just want to say thank you. I know it is not easy to sit here for quite a few hours and listen to all of these people make comment and a lot of them hateful or even in disagreement. It's just hard to sit there and listen to. So I appreciate what you're doing. I have full trust in this board of the decisions that you guys make. I know that every decision is wavered, is pondered upon, thought upon, researched, prayed over. Um, it's not easy. I know that the public doesn't necessarily see all the painstaking labor that goes into every decision that you make. And so I just appreciate the amount of time that every one of you are giving to this county. And again, just want to say thank you for everything you're doing. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number sixty-five, Rich Dossman, Wright Township.
Uh, good evening. My name's Rich Dossman. I live in Wright Township. Um, I think I'll just start by saying that I don't think a lot of people understand what freedom is. Freedom is very simple. Freedom is the power to choose. And several years ago, we saw with the beginning of COVID, how that power to choose was being taken from us. We were told we couldn't make decisions for ourselves. We couldn't decide how much risk we were willing to assume on ourselves. I can go out on the streets right now and drive and, and decide that I'll risk getting a head-on collision or I can stay home. I can decide to go out and, and, and go to the store and, and take the risk of being mugged, uh, or I can stay home. I can go out and get the risk, take the risk of, of getting contracting some sort of disease or I can stay home. But the government took that choice from us by telling us we had to stay home. We couldn't make a decision for ourselves. I pose no risk to anyone. If I'm healthy, if I'm not healthy, I can understand the government quarantining me. But if I'm healthy and I am not convicted of any sort of crime, why am I put under house arrest? So a lot of us woke up about two or three years ago and saw what was happening and that our power to choose was being taken from us and those choices were being made for us. And we woke up and we saw a number of people who are willing to step forward and run for commissioner spots that respected our power to choose and replace those who were not supporting our power to choose. And you ran, a majority of you, understanding that you were going to let us know what it is you were going to do. It was very transparent. Anyone who's paying attention knew what your agenda was. And that's why we voted for you and that's why we support you and that's why I hope you guys stand strong. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number sixty-six is Melinda Pago, Muskegon County.
Hello. It's my pleasure to see you again. I'm Melinda Pago. This time I come to you as co-chair of the Michigan Republican Party. We applaud the Ottawa County Commissioners for ensuring residents in their county can defend their lives. Let's remember the laws of this state never supersede our constitutional rights. All humans have a right to defend themselves from violence. The Ottawa County Board of Commissioners are rightfully defending the constitutional rights of the people of Ottawa County. They're setting the standard and the example for what other counties' boards of commissioners should be doing across Michigan. And to the marks us posing as liberals in the room, what is happening in Ottawa County is just beginning. In closing, we would like to recognize Black History Month as we, the Michigan Republican Party, just a week ago, made history electing our first black chairperson, Christina Caramo. The advancement of diverse, of diversity is clearly coming forth from the new Republican Board in Ottawa County and the Michigan Republican Party. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Number sixty-seven is Kim Nagy.
Hi, I'm Kim Nagy from Genesee. I believe that Ms. Hamley was hired. I'm glad Commissioner Kyers is here. Uh, Commissioner Zylstra has given his reasoning for voting no on the upcoming resolution. And it is also clear that trying to retroactively change that motion is very transparent in that you will now say that she was not hired and therefore her lawsuit is invalid. She was hired. We could go forward with things like job reviews. You could do this in a different way. You could get away with what you want to do, which is install Mr. Kelly, but do it in a way that is uh, typical of business practices and you wouldn't have as much anger and upset from the public. I do support Ms. Hamley. I believe she's doing a fine job. She is qualified. She's served our community for nineteen years. I really am concerned about how this board is operating and we would like a return to good governance and standard operating procedure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number sixty-eight is Carla Wagner, Kent County.
Good evening. I am actually a Kent County resident, but I was raised in Ottawa County for the first forty-eight years of my life. Um, I'm here in support of Mr. John Gibbs and Mr. Joe Moss. Over the last two and a half years, I was able to meet with them, not a lot, but enough to say that they were never anything other than Christians and gentlemen. I think you guys here in Ottawa County are very fortunate to have them leading you here. Um, to the people of Ottawa County, your situation is not unique. I'm in Kent County. We're having the same struggles that you are having. I hope for everyone's sake that the two A amendment goes through, the proposal to make, um, Ottawa County a sanctuary city goes through, just like we are hoping that that goes through in Kent County as well. We're pushing for the same thing. I think your sheriff's department and, um, your police departments are probably the best ones to talk about that. I was a fully uniformed volunteer officer with Kent County for six years, so I volunteered to be shot. Luckily, I never was, but it's, it's a, it's something that needs to be done. It is our second amendment. It's our second amendment right. Um, and that should not be taken away from us. You have tons of people here talking about their First Amendment wishes, freedom of speech. They all wanted that. They were here and they are exercising that right. I want my right to bear guns if I need to bear arms. Um, I've heard people talk about the, things that are happening in the libraries. I am a, I'm a Christian. I was raised Dutch Christian Reformed. The public libraries that my property tax dollars pay for carry a lot of books that I don't, I don't agree with and I don't want to pay. I don't, I don't want my property tax dollars to make me complicit in the type, kind of garbage that is available in the public libraries. I also heard someone talk about something that happened at GBSU and they said, well, Ottawa County didn't support that. Yeah, you did. Every property taxpayer here pays to support Grand Valley State College or Grand Valley State University. You're all complicit. So until we start making a stand and saying, no, we don't want that stuff. And if I don't get that choice, then I don't want to pay the property tax, take it off my property taxes. And everybody that agrees to it and wants to pay it, let them do it. It just doesn't, I just don't want it to be me. But I don't envy you your position, but I know you'll do a good job. Congratulations. Carry on. I wish Kent County was as lucky as what the people are here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number sixty-nine, David Barnowski, Port Sheldon Township.
Hello again. My name's Dave Barnowski and I voted in Port Sheldon Township. It's frustrating to come in here and watch and hear all the people make their arguments because they're all seem so absolute. Their Second Amendment rights, there's this, there's that, everything is cut and dried. The good Christians who come up and say prayers and claim their, everything should, we should live in God's glory or whatever. I didn't listen to the precise words they were saying because I don't believe in God. But that doesn't matter in this government. You're supposed to take us all as we are. If you use your religion to categorize me as a socialist or as a demon, and it's really easy to demonize people when you can go straight to the word demon, because I've had it done before, you're not dealing with us fairly. You're not dealing with who we really are. That's what I see wrong here. When you all got together and put all, everybody together on the same slate and took over this board, you basically said you don't want any input. You just want to decide. That's not right. There are rare exceptions, but there's still that solid block that'll just do, seems to be able to do whatever Joe Moss wants to have him do. It's not right. You have to deal with who we really are, not just categorize us as somebody that you can ignore and walk away from. I hear people talking about the Constitution who obviously never read it or studied it because they all claim to know. I went through four years of that. Not only that, but a good part of it, I have a law, I have a degree that says I have a bachelor's in arts of law, common democracy. That's why I'm here. You're being bad Democrats. And I mean that with the little d-word too. You're being bad Republicans too. You're not Republicans anymore, not whoever that person who came forward with the, the Second Amendment petition. Those are the rhinos in the, in Republican Party. The people, the classic Republicans are who I still have some faith in, like Mr. Kyers came in here and told you the truth. I don't expect you to change your mind based on this, but some of you have to be careful that Mr. Moss doesn't lead you into other charges. There is no basis for the resolution you have tonight. None.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, those are the, uh, all the registered public comments we have. The chair would like to. Wonderful. Is there anybody else who would like to give a public comment? Welcome.
Thank you. David Moore, fifty-five-year resident of Ottawa. I've heard a lot of things. A lot disappoints me and I told you before, you can tell the character of a person based upon the words they use and what they do with them. Um, I find it ironic that everybody's so down on this board when I know what the previous board was. Your appointees matter. Who you appoint, it matters. What they do when they're in office of your appointing matters also. I can't help but wonder if these people each spend eighty thousand dollars to protect their right to have a driveway. How ironic. What, what do you think they'd be saying now? Yeah, I lived it. I feel for the guy with his kids. The jud- judicial system in Ottawa County is not in good shape. I've stood here before and told you about, remember the wave from the boat. There's eleven of you. Eight of you are new. That happened for a reason. Elections have consequences. The people of Ottawa County were not impressed with the previous board. Mr. Kyers can say whatever he wants to. He's a very big disappointment. He willingly chose the lie to the Supreme Court of the state of Michigan to take away the right of one farmer to have a frickin driveway so he could work his fields as he seen fit. What's next? What are you gonna take away next? We got problems in this country and we got problems in Ottawa. Protect my rights to bear arms. You are the last line of defense. Prosecutors across this nation aren't even prosecuting people anymore for committing crimes. Don't make me a criminal because you're not getting my gun. The Constitution says I have a right to have it. The Declaration of Independence by Mr. Jefferson's words said that anybody who's a member of this republic, when they find that this government no longer serves them, it's time to replace that government and install it with a new one that will. Now, there's easy ways to replace it with elections if they're fair. And there's more difficult ways. Make no mistake, people, this is history being written right now. There is a tugging at the very morals of what this country was and is. And we are all going to be judged based upon where we go and what we do. I paid a lot of money to be able to stand here. I still am not happy with where we're at. I haven't gone away. Wrongs need to be righted. I appreciate your time and I support you right up until you don't do right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Right, seeing none, I get a motion for a ten-minute recess.
So moved.
Support?
Support.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Get back at nine twenty-six. Come this meeting back to order, please. Could please find your seats. Next up on the agenda here is correspondence. I'd like to welcome Farm Bureau. Please come to the podium. All right, back to order at nine thirty. Uh, and if Mr. Tebos is available, I will get started.
Good evening. I'm Mark Shinborn and I'm the president of Ottawa County Farm Bureau. Dan Tebos is here with me. Uh, he heads up our public policy committee and he's the one that made the connection to to get the appointment for us to to show up here tonight. Um, I was expecting to talk to the county commissioners and and maybe Joe Spalding. Um, but it's great to see press here and all these people here, so uh it's wonderful that we have a chance to share a little bit about agriculture and and what Farm Bureau does. I know many of you guys are new to the political scene, so we wanted to take the opportunity to welcome you and let you know what Ottawa County Farm Bureau does. We're not here to criticize you. We're here to help you grow in your knowledge of agriculture and offer some assistance as you steer the ship here in Ottawa County. I'd first like to speak about the diversity and importance of agriculture in Ottawa County. And then we'll touch a little bit on what Ottawa County Farm Bureau does as an organization. The diversity of Ottawa County can be traced to our unique soil structures and the tempering effect of Lake Michigan. In the northeast part of the county, often called the ridge, you'll see acres and acres of tree fruit, mostly apples. Going west off the ridge, you see a lot of row crops, corn, soybeans. Then as you head across the river, you can't help but notice all the greenhouses. Growing flowers, bedding plants, trees, shrubs. As you go further, you get into Hudsonville, the salad bowl of the county. There's onions, celery, radish, all sorts of crops like that. Then come west and pretty soon it's all blueberries. As you traveled, you might have missed that you passed by dairy farms, hog farms and turkey farms, just to name a few. So what does all this agriculture and diversity mean to Ottawa County? Well, by the numbers, five hundred and six million dollars worth of product. And that just scratches the surface. That's just what comes right off the farms. Each of these eleven hundred plus businesses, cost of production for that is another four hundred and thirty-two million. And most of that is spent locally, whether that's at implement dealers, hardware stores, purchasing fertilizer and so on. Let's look at the next level. These numbers are aren't readily available, so just look around the county. Up in Coopersville, you've got Fairlife Continental Dairy. In Allendale, La Prino Foods. Hudsonville, West Michigan Beef, building a large new addition. Farmers Co-op just finished building a a brand new facility in Briesland. Zeeland Farm Services has a massive bean plant in Zeeland. In Holland, we've got Boar's Head, Quincy Street Meats, Request Foods. Here in Borkhul, we got Tyson Foods. All of these businesses relate directly to farmers. Agriculture is the fuel that powers the economic engine here in Ottawa County. Let's not forget in oh eight, when the auto industry was struggling, the only strong sector in Ottawa County was agriculture. When COVID hit, industries came to a stop. The ag businesses took precautions, but employees still went to work every day because the world had to be fed. Now let's look at how agriculture is represented. Many of the commodity groups have their own organizations. We have corn growers, we have Michigan allied poultry, Michigan fruit growers, so on. All of those do a good job in representing their own commodities. Farm Bureau, on the other hand, represents the whole of agriculture. So on a national level, we're represented in Washington DC by the American Farm Bureau Federation. In Michigan, our state organization is Michigan Farm Bureau. There we have lobbyists that are lobbying legislators on on all the state issues. And here in Ottawa County, we have our Ottawa County Farm Bureau. Each county farm bureau is a grassroots organization. All of the issues that our organization lobbies for, whether local, state or national level, are voted on by the members of at the county annuals. These issues are developed by our polit- policy development committee throughout the year. They're discussed and voted on at our annual meetings. Those issues that pass move on to a state level and national level where they're voted on by body of the members. It is through this process that we put together our policy book. Each of you have a copy of that in the packet that we gave you. These policies cover state and national issues and reflect our desires in preference to regulations, rules and laws. Here in Ottawa County, we have a program we call Ag in the Classroom. There, we have a full-time individual that goes into area schools primarily K through fourth and teaches hands-on lessons about agriculture. Each lesson meets the state's curriculum guidelines. It is our opportunity to help kids begin to understand where their food comes from. This spring, we'll be doing a Project Red Rural Education Day at Visser Farms. Two hundred plus students from West Ottawa schools will be coming out to the farm to experience some hands-on agriculture. We also have several events through the year that US commissioners will all be invited to attend. One of those invitations for our legislative breakfast is in your packet. This is an event where we invite legislators at all levels of government to come and update us on what they're working on in their area government. And not just on agriculture, but and not just on agriculture, but on on all sorts of issues. This is a really good time for you guys to just meet the farmers and and interact with us and is attended quite well by the agricultural community, so it's a really good event to come to. In the summer, we do a summer picnic, this is a family-friendly event, another good time to interact with our members. And in the fall, we have our county annual, which is when we discuss policies, and then we elect our Board of Directors. As you'll notice, each of these event events includes food. That's kind of important to us, hopefully it is to you as well. In Michigan, we also have Farm Bureau Insurance Company. This company was developed many years ago to provide quality, cost-effective insurance to our farmer members. Today, many people that are not farmers have opted to purchase our insurance. These non-egg people are referred to as associate members, but they and they do not have voting privileges. So here in Ottawa County, we have roughly fifteen hundred farmer members, and we have another ten thousand associate members. Lastly, I'd like to like you to think of us each time you sit down to a meal and be thankful for the hard-working farmers that grew the crops and raised the animals. So we have plenty of food here in Ottawa County, across our state, and across this great country. Thank you again for allowing the time to address you.
Thank you. Right, we're moving on to number six, approval of agenda. Negative motion, please.
Second.
Right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries. Okay, we have. Let's see, consent resolutions. Is there anyone who would like to address any of the consent resolutions?
I'd like to make the motion to approve those consent resolutions.
Support.
I would like to pull one item off.
Commissioner Roddy, what item you want to pull off?
I would like to pull off item B, the Community Action Agency Advisory Board, and just have a a separate vote on that.
All right, we'll pull that off, handle that next. The motion to approve the consent resolutions with a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries on seven A, handle seven B. Community Action Agency Advisory Board. Motion is to approve the nomination of Brittany Brown and select one to fill one consumer vacancy beginning immediately and ending December thirty-one of this year. I get a motion.
So moved.
A second.
So motion and support, any discussion? Or we'll move to a vote? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
A vote nay also, that motion carries. We are on number eight, public hearings, we have none. So moving to agenda and action requests, we have one, so moving to nine A. I get a motion to correct resolution from the December thirteen board meeting.
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, so think to begin discussion on this, think I'll go to legal. Looks like there was, at least in the packet, a little bit of information on the meeting, the minutes that happened, December thirteen, there was an agenda item that was added during that meeting that wasn't on the published agenda. And it looks like there was an error in the actual resolution that was signed, so. Counsel Jordan, could you speak to that briefly?
I'd be happy to. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so. We had the opportunity, I've had the opportunity to review the videotape of the December thirteenth meeting. And the motion was made. And the minutes properly reflect the motion that was made on that day. However, the resolution that was drafted do not reflect, does not reflect the minutes or the motion. It was an error. And so this resolution is merely to correct the record. In the law, the court speaks through its written orders. And this board speaks through its written resolutions. So they have to be correct, they have to be accurate. And that is all that's being done. It is not changing history, it's not rewriting the motion, it's simply correcting the record.
Thank you, is there discussion?
Yeah, just.
Commissioner Zalstra.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, appreciate that. I wonder if we can just kind of talk about the word error. Because I I was there on December thirteen, I read the resolution, I have the resolution from the thirteenth. We voted on the resolution. I don't see the error in the resolution. I understand that there's definitely been a motion that was made and the resolution, but there's no error in the resolution itself. So can I speak to what the word error means here?
And looking at the the video.
I'm looking at the resolution that we passed. And that's as a commissioner, that's the document that I read, because I know that that's a legal document.
There were three contingencies that were motioned on that day. And the resolution only reflects two of the contingencies.
So quick question, then, if the resolution only reflected one contingency, we would still want to correct that to have all three?
We want all three, because that was the motion, and that also was included in the minutes.
Okay. Additional discussion?
I guess I still haven't, and you can go ahead, Commissioner Bergman, I haven't got an answer to what the word error means, I mean, the document that I have here is the document that we voted on. There's no error in the document. So I I don't know what we're correcting here, go ahead, sorry.
I would, I would agree with that. Even though someone has twisted the outcome of the December thirteenth decision, I can guarantee that all eleven of us at that meeting voted to hire Adeline that day. And just to make sure you understand, I'd like to ask Justin Robach just to verify that we, in fact, did vote to hire Adeline that day.
Could the clerk speak to the minutes as they're recorded, please?
Certainly, Commissioner, I, so I was actually not present at the December thirteen meeting, however, obviously, our staff was, and the record of the minutes reflects that the resolution passed. And a resolution. My understanding of a resolution is that it is a board action.
Yes. And we did hire Adeline that day. And no matter what our esteemed attorney says, it did happen. You can twist this meaning whatever way you want. But in a law of court, a law of a court of judge, judgeships, they they will see that we, in fact, did elect and hire Adeline Hadley that day.
I guess I'd like to try to answer Commissioner Zalstra's question real quick, we'll go to Commissioner Roddy. I did a quick search online, an error is defined as something produced by mistake, such as a typographical error. If that helps.
No, I mean, I understand, I appreciate the, you know, the definition of the word error. But I mean, I I I have the signed resolution here. For me, that's a legal document, and the idea of going back and changing a legal document just doesn't make sense to me, so I guess I'm kind of like stuck as to how is this possible, right?
The chair recognizes Commissioner Roddy.
Thank you. Um, so my understanding is that there was one of the, one of the conditions. One of the conditions to her hire was that, number one, approval by the Board of Commissioners. Number two, confirmation by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services that she has the required educational certifications and work background. And three, successfully passing the county's background check process. And when this was written into resolution form, number one was omitted. And I have the video available here, and so simply all that I believe legal is trying to do is to have the resolution reflect the same thing as the motion reflected and as the minutes reflected. Just that we want all three documents to be the same. And so I am going to play this video. Hopefully you can hear it.
With my Commissioner tires.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve and authorize a board chairperson and clerk pressure to sign a resolution to put Adeline Hambley as a county administrative health officer congenit upon approval by the Board of Commissioners, confirmation by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services that she has recorded edificational certificates and work background and successfully passed in the county background check process. Second.
And then that went on to be passed unanimously. And so, again, we're just looking at at taking the actual motion that was passed and as accurately reflected in the minutes and having the same verbiage reflected in the resolution.
Thank you, additional discussion? Commissioner Curran.
Thank you. So I I took a little bit of time to study this. I also listened to the video and went through the new resolution and then the corrected resolution, and it it took me a little bit, but I finally. Because in our, in the resolution that was created, it only referred to the video and the official minutes, and those two things did line up. In the video, there were three items stated, approval by the board, confirmation for the Michigan Health from the Health Department, and then the background check being passed by Ms. Hambley. Those two things lined up, and then, so I was like, well, where's the conflict? So I was actually able to obtain the actual resolution that was signed from our clerk. And the conflict seems to arise in that the wording is missing or missing. And to me, I don't think that it's incumbent to put that there's going to be a vote when the actual resolution states that the vote was made. So those two item, all three items are actually in this resolution from what I can see. Because the vote was actually completed, and it looks like that's what they decided to do. Now, with that being said, one of the things that I've observed is that there are many people who are upset with the fact that things were added to the agenda on January third by the new board. But if you look back at this particular situation on December thirteenth, this was also added to the agenda. And at the last meeting in the, at the last hour. So I mean, I I think that for those who are upset, I hope that we are equally upset with what happened at the December thirteenth meeting. I believe it is incumbent upon us to really look at these things, and if we're going to have a standard, that we hold all people to that standard. I know that I will be voting no on this, because I don't feel like this is, there's any discrepancy here, although I do disagree with adding something at the last minute of the last hour to try to take a decision away from the new board. So that's where I sit on this, thank you.
Thank you, additional discussion?
Mr. Chair, I have a a clarification that I would like to ask. Not pertaining directly to the resolution, but the the replacement resolution refers to official video record. And I am not sure what that is, I'm the record keeper for the board. And we keep official minutes for the board that are approved, they become official when they are approved by this board. But we, I don't know, I guess I would like some clarification from legal counsel as to what official videos are. They are not technically required to be retained longer than the official minutes, and I just want to make sure that we have a fully accurate resolution. That if that affects us somewhere down the road, I want to make sure that that's clarified.
Quick, quick question, could you direct the board to where you, where that part is in the resolution?
It's the third, whereas in the new Exhibit A in the packet.
Thank you.
I believe.
Could counsel speak to the wording about the video record, please?
The only thing I can say of, as far as the official video record would be the would be the the video that I saw from December thirteen.
This is the video published by Ottawa County.
I just want to make sure as we're getting as we're defining things and and paying very close attention to accuracy, which I believe is very important. I'm requesting that maybe we we strike the word official, because there is no such thing as an official video record as far as I am aware in the statute.
I have no problem with that.
Thanks.
And I would just also note that the timestamp is correct. I started this video at thirty-three twenty-nine, and this says thirty-three thirty, so it is referencing the video that I just played, so.
I guess Commissioner Zalstra.
I just want to echo what Commissioner Curran said, I'll be voting no, I see no basis for changing, amending, correcting, whichever word you want to use, a resolution that was passed. I guess the question I have is, to what purpose are we doing this?
I I'd also like to echo a part of Commissioner Curran's statement, quote, the wording is missing, unquote. And so that's why I'm going to support correcting the wording.
I think we needed to amend this too, so I would move to amend the resolution as requested by the clerk. That in that third paragraph, the the third whereas that we take out the word official. So it would read, whereas according to the video record of the December thirteen, twenty-twenty-two board meeting. Removing the word official from that portion.
We have a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, Mr. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bonnema.
Would you be opposed to? I I would really like to hear the answer.
We have a motion that we need to handle real quick, we can go right back to that.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other discussion on amend, on removing the word official from the third whereas? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bonnema.
Yeah, I just was asking if I would like to hear the answer to the question that Commissioner Zalstra asked, and just I'd like to hear that information, if you don't mind.
I'm not sure what information you're referring to.
No, I just.
Your question.
Counsel, as to the purpose of doing this, obviously, board time is limited. We don't do things for no good reason, I'm just wondering what that reason might be.
Again, just to correct the record, to make sure that the the resolution is reflecting properly.
So there's no, there's no subsequent actions being taken on this. This resolution?
I don't have that power to do that.
Okay. Commissioners Alstra, there's
Further actions would be taken by you, not by me.
Right. There's nothing else on the agenda.
I, I realize that. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up. That's okay.
Commissioner Bonnema.
Ever since I read this on Friday afternoon, I've been giving a lot of thought to it and I really appreciate counsel answering my call on Saturday morning to help answer some of my questions and give me some of his counsel as to what's motivating this? You know, where, where are we going? Why are we voting on this? You helped me understand that Commissioner Moss brought it to your attention and so you looked into it. You know, at the end of the day, when I, when I think about what we're doing here, I want to walk away tonight knowing that we truthfully represented the will of the prior commissioners out of respect to them. I don't want to be seen as misleading the public as to what was accomplished that night. Just like I wouldn't want the next commission to mislead anything that I voted on. I think it's one thing to correct our own minutes and our own resolutions, but I believe it's crossing the line to try to correct a prior commission. I think if we are upset with who is chosen to be our health officer for us and Ms. Hambley, that we can address that going forward. But I don't think that it's our role. I think it's dangerous territory to try to reach back and, and tell people who clearly are represented here at this table and came to the lectern to tell us what they voted on to try to change that in any way. I feel very uncomfortable going into that territory. I think that opens us up to additional litigation. As a true conservative, I believe that I don't want to see one more dollar of our hard earned tax dollars spent on additional litigation.
My chair recognizes Commissioner Roddy.
I will be voting to approve this because I think it's entirely appropriate to have the record reflect the actual words of the commissioners who passed the resolution.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Commissioner Turpstra.
Yeah, I think all of us up here as commissioners understand why this was brought to us. I'm not going to speak to that, but I believe it's a pretty big Hail Mary. I don't think it's going to land and I believe it's probably going to land us in harder situations going forward. I don't believe this is going to be helping us out. I think it's going to be hurting us. So that's why we'll be voting no.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right.
I have one more question.
Commissioner Curran.
So if we change this, if this is voted through, will this, it will merely be fixing the record? It, there will, this will not activate any other voting?
As I understand it from legal counsel, this is specifically
Well, legal counsel.
Upholding, excuse me, this is specifically fixing an error that was made last year.
What legal counsel said was he couldn't speak to that. That's what he said.
He said it was correcting an error. Counsel, could you verify if this is, if my understanding is correct on that?
I said that this resolution that's being brought before you today is merely to correct the resolution that was adopted and signed from the December 13th meeting.
Yes.
That's it. It's not changing anything. It's just correcting the record.
And then Commissioners Alstra asked pretty much the same question. Correct, Commissioners Alstra? You asked the same question and Jack, Mr. Jordan said that he could not answer that question because the county commission would do that. So I'm asking that of our fellow commissioners.
If anybody would like to move to amend the agenda after this vote, feel free. Otherwise, if there's no more discussion, go to the clerk, call the roll.
Sir, Mr. Bellnapp.
Yes.
Mrs. Curran.
No.
Mrs. Medema.
Yes.
Mr. Turpstra.
No.
Ms. Cosby.
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra.
No.
Mr. Berkman.
No.
Mr. Bonnema.
No.
Mrs. Roddy.
Yes.
Mrs. Evil.
Yes.
And Mr. Moss.
Yes.
And the most, motion passes.
Right, moving to, well, or should I say past numbers 10, past number 10 to number 11. We have another time, second time for public comment. If you would like to address the board, if you could please come forward and you'll have three minutes to address us.
I believe we have Mr. Dan Zimmer from Port Sheldon Township who's signed up to give the first public comment.
Dan Zimmer, Port Sheldon Township, West Allen, Michigan. Chairman and members of the room. During the Trump Biden debates, when Chris Wallace asked Trump to denounce and condemn white supremacy, Trump responded, Proud Boys, stand back and stand down. And I did nothing. I watched the Stop the Steal movement disseminate false narratives. And I did nothing. I listened to the recorded Trump call to Secretary of State Raffensperger and conversation attempting to wag the dog for finding more votes. And I did nothing. Then came the whistle call to Washington to deploy a private army on the Capitol, complete with bulletproof vests, firearms, communication devices. You know, the typical stuff, over enthusiastic tourists, right? Then came the marching orders at the ellipse. And we did nothing. Watching in disbelief, the attack on the Capitol. I have vivid recall of gallows built and chants to hang Mike Pence. And the White House did nothing. The conniving and scheming that plotted to achieve an outright power grab involving substituting with fake electors, and I did nothing. Although the chairman, board members, administrator, common legal group are not publicly proven participants, you all are riding shotgun on the Make America Great Again runaway train. This crazy train is now in our ecosystem and has taken up residency in our county building. A political pandemic is occurring and it's time to contain the virus is early and at the source. January 3, 2023 events was my wake up call to utilize my God given talents to respectfully oppose autocratic government at the federal, state and local levels.
Thank you.
The next public comment is Don Bergman from Park Township.
Yeah, thank you for giving me this time. My last sentence in my first speech was biblical little, little list. Excuse me, are complicit in gay and lesbian and transgender deaths. And your positions to try and silence discussions about this in schools has the potential to lead to people's death. As I came in about that, I think I never chose to be heterosexual. Did you? No, it's something that as we grew, this attraction to the opposite sex developed. Not everybody's that way. Some have an attraction towards the same sex. Some thinks that they're in wrong gender. We need to make place for these people in our community. They're different from us. But they're human beings with equal rights in this country. An important part of that right is learning at an early age who they are. I never gave my son the opportunity to know who he was. When he came out to us, we asked him, you're in California. We didn't have a clue. Why, why did you tell us? He said, I needed to know if you loved me. There's a chance that one of these people here and here going to have a gay kid. Are you going to make room for him? Or you could have put through like I did my son. I'm giving you the opportunity. Don't do that to your kids. By the time there comes puberty, you've got to know that there's an option out there that if they are gay, they're gay. They didn't choose to be gay. And I see this happening. You're taking over schools so that the teachers can't talk about it in schools. In Florida, what's illegal to say the word gay in school and let young kids know that some people are gay and some aren't. It also hurts heterosexuals. There's guys in jail for life for killing Matt Shepard. A friend, a friend of mine was rejected by their parents. Last 20 years of their life, they never talked to him. That's what literal interpretation of certain scriptures and passage does. It leads to death.
Thank you.
Is there all the registered public comments we have?
Again, I'm Brenda Vandermeulen from Holland Charter Township. Having listened to the debate you just had about whether to change the minutes of that meeting to reflect a video, I would like to ask that you include in the minutes of this meeting that it was affirmed that Adeline Hambley was hired by the Board of Commissioners on December 13, 2022. And that changing the minutes of that meeting was to correct an error, not to change her hiring status. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ryan Cotton, City of Holland. In my 35 years of service to local government, I spend 5,000 hours and meetings such as you've just experienced tonight. I have four points. Thank you for your opportunity for people to come at 6:30 and speak. I heard several members of the audience express appreciation for that, given their full time jobs. Second, given my experience, it's clear there is a hidden agenda that's confusing at best and at worst it's deceiving to members of the public who are watching or here trying to understand what the will of the majority of the board eventually will be on your last subject pertaining to the health officer. Third, I want to compliment the five who I thought was able to see and understand what was going on in relation to that hidden agenda. And also discern very carefully the discussion and the questions and the answers. And it did the homework and understood what I believe was the truth in that conversation. I will say that they probably also understand that in good government, the ends do not justify the means. And fourth, lastly, those who voted in favor of a motion subject to correction under your rules of order, perhaps the kind of clerk can advise you. You have until the next meeting to make a motion to have your action that you just took voted on again. Those who voted and one of the six had that right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Bilski, Park Township. This is my first time here. Gretchen, I've written to you a couple of times. I'm sorry, I should be talking to you all. I agree, agree with the gentleman who spoke just a minute ago. It was quite obvious what was going on. I'd also like to just say one more thing to the people here and everywhere and the people you have pray that our country says it's under God, not under Jesus Christ. So I just want to make that distinction because many people pray to God, not all of them through Jesus Christ. So I just want to make that distinction and I would really appreciate it if you could have other people of other faiths come and say our prayers because we're all in this together. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Dave Moore in Allen Dale. You've heard about the hidden agenda. Let's talk about the unhidden agenda. The previous board the last six months after the primaries. Let's talk about that. What happened? According to Mr. Shea, they spent more money than they'd ever done before. Did more business than ever was on the books before. Aren't we amazing? Why? Because they're getting out. Let's be honest. Let's be honest, Mr. Zylestra. Let's be honest. Sorry. There was agendas then too. And they weren't nice. And they put you guys in a bad spot. Whether it was the attorney sending you a letter saying he was going to resign and setting you up for problems or this kind of stuff. I don't, as a previous board member in Allen Dale Township, we painfully made sure that every one of our motions had every word properly put in there to do what we wanted, but not do more than we wanted. How does a resolution and a motion not become the same thing? That resolution wasn't written prior to the meeting. I don't understand. The previous board was not a saint. Sometimes you got to correct the wrongs of the past. To get on the right path, to change the direction of the boat, you have to turn the wheel. I'm sorry you are where you are. I really am. I've felt the pain for years. And there was 11 people that all embraced it. That meat board, those, that board and the previous board, it wasn't just one. I've seen what can happen. Be strong. No matter how hard the wind blows, no matter how big the tornado is, be strong and stand. You weren't elected to bow down. These people I did not elect. The ones that are complaining, I didn't elect them. Please do the right thing. And I would challenge the previous board members to please start doing the right thing. Now's a great time to step up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Take your time, take your time.
Hi, Lori Grassman, Robinson Township. I noticed today that there was a lot of people that decided to come for their first time to fight for CMH and I've been here for two years speaking to this board, two years. I have a 24 year old daughter who is the mental age of one. And when there's grants out there and there's Medicaid, I am 100% with you, Gretchen. You need to fine tooth comb where that money is going to because I can guarantee you for the one person that is getting services, there are three more behind them that is not getting services. And those are the most underserved people. The ones that can't shower themselves, that can't eat for themselves, that can't change their own diapers, that can't do anything for themselves should absolutely come first. So for the ones that are here for the first time that are standing for CMH, where have you been standing? Thank you, Gretchen, for fine tooth combing CMH. I would encourage you to continue to fine tooth comb, ask questions, do not just let them come in here and ask for employees one year after they received money. That money has That money has already been granted and she is asking one year after she asked for it for these employees. The kids need services, they're absolutely correct, but they need the right ones and they need to go to the right people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Belinda Coronado, City of Holland, thirty-two years. I'm not only here for myself, but I'm here for the people that look like me. Um, and aren't able to be here because they don't have transportation, that is a barrier. They don't have access to internet because um, they are not a people of means. Um, and they use the county libraries for access to um, services such as um, internet and to send communications, electronic communications. The people that I stand here for do live here in Ottawa County and you took, you swore under oath that you would serve everyone. It says um, this song that I read, be kind to the needy, refrain from exploiting the poor by dragging them through the court disputes. Defend the right of the poor and the needy. Um, I came here thirty-two years ago and a single mom grew up in a dysfunctional home, alcoholism, drugs and whatnot. I was the first to graduate, uh, served my country, went overseas to Iraq. Um, came back with PTSD, on the verge of committing suicide. And I put that out there because I am one of many people. You might not rub shoulders with them, they might not live in your ward, they might not um, go to the public schools that your kids get to go to or the private schools. But there are people out there that need it. I came back from Iraq and um, I was diagnosed with PTSD. And a hell or high waters, I was going to admit that I needed help. I was on the verge of committing suicide. I worked for the prosecutor's office in turn. Everything went south, I was fired. I went into the hospital before I was fired and then when I was released, I was fired. I say that because I had a great doctor. I said, I don't want to take drugs and he's like, sometimes you need antidepressants. That, you know, and so that started my healing journey. I grew up on welfare. Um, but I graduated from high school, I served my country, I worked, I came to Ottawa County finding a home. My brother was shot and killed in Joliet, Illinois. I raised my family here, I grew roots. My kids have graduated, two of the three from college, they're all graduated from high school. So I am a first generation, my parents immigrants, dysfunctional. And my God that I call today, I see in my dog. Did you know that dogs spelled, God spelled backwards is dog? That's my higher power. My dog saved my life. I'm here because, please, please, I, I implore you, put your personal agendas, let's not look back. We all went through the pandemic, everybody was just trying to reach for air, but let's go forward, let's come together. Ottawa County is a place where we all belong. I've been here thirty-three years. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? If not, we will move to. Sure we have um, four currently for people on Zoom. And we may have one in person. Feel free, yeah. Welcome.
Thank you, Sean Half, Ottawa County. I just want to, I live in Georgetown. I just want to thank Ottawa Impact for doing what you said you're going to do. Please continue to do so. The bellicose barrage you've been taking of unfair criticism is all the proof you need to know that you're doing the right thing. Now, I've heard some of our community members here have concerns about how their money is being spent. I share those concerns too. So what is the solution we should be able to unite behind? Liberty, limited government as small as possible. We're always going to have some disagreements about how our money is spent. That's why we should always side behind limited government. If liberty can't divide us and what's concerning is some people don't even understand what liberty is. Liberty is not forcing people to close down their businesses. Close schools, strapping face mask on people, forcing people to take jabs that they may or not want to do. If you're concerned about COVID, which is still around. By all means, wear a face mask, wear three face masks. Get as many vaccines as you want, stay home and stay safe. Don't force other people to take positions that they don't agree with. Other people are concerned about the diversity, equity and inclusion department being shut down. Being concerned that we're going to lose jobs. Evidence refutes that. Florida, where woke goes to die, has a two point five percent unemployment rate. Texas, another state, had eight point two percent GDP growth in the third quarter of two thousand twenty-two. It doesn't sound like they're losing jobs over there. Companies are flocking there because conservative principles work and in great businesses want to have low taxes and low regulations. Finally. I feel like I've been attacked because as a Bible literate, I'm told that I want homosexuals to be killed or harmed or persecuted. That's false. A literal interpretation of the Bible says those Levitical laws. Applied to the children of Israel. We're not the children of Israel, anyone here? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, if there's no one else in person, we'll go online. The first public comment is Andrea Hill. And Andrea, if you could just unmute. And state your name and jurisdiction and you have three minutes.
Wonderful. My name is Andrea Hill, Holland Township. I have two expectations of county officials. First, that you work towards the greater good of Ottawa County. And second, that you conduct business in a legal and professional manner that aligns with best practices. The board rules contains many standards and duties that you are supposed to follow. According to board rules passed on January third, section three point six, item one includes the following as a duty of the board. As fiduciaries to the taxpayers and their funds entrusted to the county corporate. All commissioners have a responsibility to act faithfully to advance the county's corporate, legal and financial interests. Whether related to bargaining, real estate purchase, litigation or potential litigation or in any other matter. Simply stated, you are not fulfilling this duty. Board members are already being sued. And I believe that today's actions of modifying the resolution of December thirteenth will lead to additional litigation. Financially, this litigation will cost the county two hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour in attorney fees. And I believe that there will be other unintended consequences that hurt the citizens. You are acting irresponsibly and neglecting your duties to serve Ottawa County while you attempt to get personal retribution. Instead, I ask that you start treating the public health department with respect. I also ask that you investigate Administrator Gibbs' behavior towards the health administrators and follow best practices to properly address it.
Thank you. The next public comment is Kristen Hints. Kristen, if you would just give your, your uh, name and jurisdiction and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Kristen Hints and I am with Park Township. I just want to take a moment to thank Mr. Bonneman, Mr. Zalstra, Mrs. Curran and Mr. Bergman. For speaking against modifying the December thirteenth resolution. I appreciate you doing your homework and uh, really doing some thorough thinking about that. So thanks again.
Thank you. The next public comment is Keith Wickman. Keith, if you just unmute yourself. Give your jurisdiction, you have three minutes.
Hello, this is, this is Jewel Wickman. I'm using Keith Wickman, my husband's laptop, um, Spring Lake, Michigan. There's a lot of misguided anger tonight regarding the new commissioners, just asking for information and time to properly evaluate the terms. Of the CMH federal grant that is set to expire August of this year. Um, not one person that gave public comment tonight, with the exception of Lori Grassman at the end. Um, asked why our CMH waited so long to finally start posting for staff positions for a grant initiative. That was issued in August of twenty twenty-one. This doesn't make sense because in order for them to get a grant, one must have a business plan submitted with their proposal with all expenses costed out. The Ottawa County CCBHC expansion grant was issued in August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. This is not a new grant initiative. This, this is a grant that is set to expire in six months. This initiative should have hit the ground running September first, twenty twenty-one, when the grant was issued for three point eight million dollars back in twenty twenty-one. In response to our CMH has submitted a pro, a proposal. But the previous commissioners and current CMH management did not spend as much time marketing this grant money to help the most vulnerable, vulnerable as it, as the money was intended. If the public wants to target angry questions about money left on the table, then target your questions to Commissioner Zelstra. Who sat on the CMH board as secretary or the current CMH management. The request for the half a million in jobs was not accompanied with a copy of the proposal of the grant to the current commissioners. To date, I don't think that they still have gotten a copy of that grant. I appreciate the commissioners taking the time to ask questions and review the details of the grant. And as, as it is nearly over and evaluate why the current CMH management did not implement the proposal that they submitted for the three point eight million which they received. The board is required to provide financial oversight. The grant money has been sitting on the table for eighteen months after, after the deal was closed in twenty twenty-one and is set to expire in six months. They, the current commissioners did not say no. All they said is they just wanted time to research what the financial consequences would be to our county and taxpayers. Um, due to the CMH waiting so long to implement the initiative. And what, you know, what, what is the consequences? Um, does a millage have to pay for the full time employees that they are taking on now, six months before the grant expires? Or does current Medicaid funding that is reserved for other vulnerable populations have to now be spread across to take care of this misguided grant? If the people of this county were the previous board's. Previous commissioners concern or the CMH management's tops concern. They would have hit the ground running with the submitted business plan for this initiative back in twenty twenty-one. However, this was not the case. People need to start asking the right questions of the community mental health management. Stop harassing the commissioners for trying to get transparency of fiscal matters that are required that they.
Thank you. Those are all the comments we have on Zoom, Mr. Chair. All right. Seeing no other public comments, uh, we'll move to twelve. A additional business report from county administrator.
Thank you Chairman. So just a few updates here. We're off to a really good start here. And a couple of the things coming up are the strategic plan. Um, we'll be working on updating that and being very close touch with the departments uh, to make sure that we're reflecting uh. Uh, the goals that are being met as well as making any adjustments needed moving forward. That'll be a very collaborative process involving uh, both the board as well as the departments and staff and everything. So I think it's going to be a very good process. Same goes for the budget, which is on a somewhat similar timeline to the strategic plan. I look for that, to that collaborative process as well. And having all the stakeholders involved. To that point, um, I'm continuing to make the rounds and uh, and to build relationships with everyone. And we'll be doing brown bag lunches coming up here over the next several weeks and months. Uh, visiting all of our campuses around the county and just having a very informal lunch with uh, any and all staff who wants to come and just have a good conversation. And so I very much look forward to that. I must say it's been a very good experience thus far. Um, I'm very impressed with professionalism and the uh, attitude and the tenor of the staff. So I very much look forward to continuing to go out and uh, build relationships and meet everyone, both within the county uh, as well. But also with the different chambers and, and various philanthropic groups in the county, that's been a wonderful process as well. So I expect that to keep going forward and I expect it to be a very good year. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we are almost done with the meeting, Commissioners Alstra.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. Appreciate that Chairman Boss. Yeah, uh, I think a lot of people have talked about that CMH piece and I understand there may be different opinions on this. But I think Commissioner Bonneman made a motion in finance in the seventh. To have this moved to a work session. Do we have a scheduled date for the work session yet?
Commissioner Cosby?
Can I go ahead and speak? Yes, no, so I've been capturing data approximately probably for the last four weeks or so regarding the CCBHC grant. And I've been trying to uh, put a report together for you. I'm happy to bring you to a work session if that's something you want to do. It's completely up to you, but I do have a lot of information captured already.
Yeah, I think the motion was to bring it to a work session. So if you have a date in mind.
I, I, I don't believe that ended up turning into a motion. And so it, it, it was not passed as a motion, I don't believe. Um, it doesn't mean it can't be done, but um, I don't think that's.
There may be discrepancy, but could we set up as a work session? Would that be okay? Uh, I mean, absent that, it can go on the next.
Just need to find the time.
Could we set it up maybe after the next finance?
Yeah, after, on the seventh, I think we have an appointment right following finance committee, if I remember correctly. I'm not looking at it.
Maybe we can work on scheduling outside of this meeting.
I think that would be a better idea because there's a lot coming up.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Commissioner Cosby, if you could follow up with the board on next steps would be great.
And just one more item, Mr. Chair. And I apologize if I wasn't clear, uh, Mr. Moore, and I, and I know there's not supposed to be back and forth, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. On twelve thirteen, all the commissioners were handed the action request together with the resolution. That we corrected today, so um, I can share this with you as well, but um. There was the action request passed to us. The three commissioners who are here as well as the underlying resolutions. Thank you.
All right, so twelve B, any other general information or meetings attended or Commissioner Bonneman?
Uh, several of my constituents have been asking me the status of Nathaniel Kelly's application and I was wondering if Administrator Gibbs could give us an update.
So that is actually not on the agenda. Um, we are on general information, comments and meetings attended.
I'd be glad to discuss that with you um, afterwards.
Thank you.
Any, anything else? All right, I guess I'll, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.